Okay.
Our meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
President.
President Allen.
Here. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding closed session hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the regular enclosed session meeting minutes of?
Council President, we talked about deferring them till the next meeting because they were not completed yet.
That’s correct.
So should I say that we’re going to defer them? We’re going to defer them.
Okay.
To the next one.
Okay. Then we’re going to move on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So earlier today, the Department of Community Programs hosted its first-ever Black History Month celebration at the community center. It was a vibrant and educational event that showcased the rich cultural heritage and entrepreneurial spirit of our black community. Alongside some of our seniors, teens, and youth, I enjoyed listening to Summit’s own Tony Ellis, who will be joining us this evening. Thank you to the staff for creating a day filled with learning and appreciation for the contributions of black individuals and businesses in our community. The Department of Community Programs has been very busy. They’re also planning a Women’s Day, March 8th, at 4:00 p.m. at the community center, and your deadline to order T-shirts is this Friday, February 23rd. The Westfield Regional Health Department is hosting two free COVID-19 vaccination clinics. Anyone can attend regardless of insurance status. The clinic on February 23rd is for children six months through 11 years, and the clinic on February 29th is for individuals 12 years and older. The Westfield Regional Health Department is located at 425 East Broad Street in Westfield. Through the New Jersey State League of Municipalities, I have the privilege of sharing a scholarship opportunity for high school juniors and seniors in Summit. Three $1,000 scholarships are being offered through the Lewis Bay Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition, a statewide competition that centers on the theme “What My Municipal Government Does Best,” and seeks to highlight elected officials’ hard work and encourage future municipal leaders. The deadline to apply is March 7th. The competition is open to all high school juniors and seniors that reside in Summit. Go to cityofsummit.org/scholarship for more information and to view application details. Lastly, I want to address some commentary that has been occurring on social media and around town about the possibility of lights at Tatlock. I want to be clear that this is the beginning of the community engagement piece of this process. There has been at least one meeting with the Department of Community Programs staff and committee members and some of the Tatlock neighbors, and there will be additional meetings in the future to specifically address this topic. In addition, we’re looking to get a Parks and Recreation Community Forum on the calendar sometime in April to engage the entire community about the future of all parks and playgrounds throughout our town. We’re also looking to host a separate community forum on safety sometime in April. Please keep an eye out for more details on both of these events, which are intended to provide information on related initiatives and offer opportunities for our residents to give input and ask questions about these two very important topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Rogers?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give an update about the 2024 municipal budget. City department heads and elected officials have been working diligently on creating an annual financial plan that sufficiently balances operational needs with prudent stewardship of our public monies. Since the beginning of the year, the Finance Committee has been meeting weekly with department heads to review their respective operating budgets while also evaluating city capital project requests. During our budget discussions, we are all exceedingly aware of the many challenges before us in establishing a strong operational plan that provides essential public services in the most cost-efficient manner. In any given budget year, a municipality is always concerned about three particular cost drivers: municipal debt service, healthcare insurance premiums, and pension obligations that can negatively impact its budget condition. Last year, the city was confronted with a combined $2.4 million increase for these three major expenses. Fortunately, in 2024, the combined increase for these three expenses will be approximately $360,000. Not an insignificant increase, but much more manageable to absorb in our municipal budget. However, the city’s general liability in workers’ compensation insurance, which we typically only see annual increases under 2%, will be increasing by 18% this year, or $210,000. The city’s recycling collection service contract will be expiring at the end of June, and we will need to solicit bids again soon. We are reasonably budgeting an increase for this contract service cost, but it is still undetermined at this time. Unfortunately, the city, as well as most other municipalities in New Jersey, have experienced very sizable increases for the service over the last five years, but we’ll see. We remain somewhat hopeful on that. On the revenue side of the budget, the city’s fund balance or surplus at the end of 2023 is $11.67 million, which is an increase of $1.6 million above the previous year. This is the highest amount that I’ve been able to go back and just look back at 15 years. It’s the highest amount it’s been. Budget revenue, other than property tax revenue, is stable and will be around the same amount anticipated in last year’s budget. And also really great news, the city’s property tax base grew last year by nearly $82 million. That will generate over $700,000 of new municipal tax revenue. And as always, the city’s goal is to ensure any municipal property tax revenue increase needed to balance the budget will be limited to around 2%. Regarding the capital budget plan, Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, Finance Committee Chair Miniger, Capital Project Committee Chair Hamlet have collaborated to put together a sensible capital budget plan that is mindful of its strategic debt management practices and commitment to fund necessary capital improvements that maintain and enhance quality of life in Summit. Indeed, when the 2024 preliminary budget was presented last December, the initial capital budget, including the sewer and parking utilities, was $12.6 million. At this time, the 2024 capital budget has been reduced by almost 50% in total. It has been a tough, deliberative process with all department heads and elected officials to decide which projects get funded this year and ones that will have to be pushed to future years. There’s no shortage of important projects to be done, but we must manage our future debt service obligations at the same time. We will continue to work on completing the municipal budget over the next several weeks. I anticipate presenting the city’s municipal budget at the April 2nd council meeting. And then just one additional item. The Summit Free Market will open later this week on Friday, February 23rd, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the transfer station. Visitors are limited to 60 minutes at each Summit Free Market event. Residents must have a permit to access the transfer station to attend. Permits can be purchased online through the City of Summit Parking Services Agency at cityofsummit.org/parking. And that’s all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay. I just want to let everybody know in the back, there’s some seating up front if anybody wants to come in, squeeze together. Oh, and there’s some summit chairs also on the other side of the... Yeah. Okay. So I just wanted to give a brief report. If you have not already done so, please sign up for the city website to receive emergency alerts from the City of Summit. The city has transitioned to the Rave Mobile Safety Smart 911 Emergency Alert System, and citizens are required to opt in to the new system at smart911.com to continue receiving alerts. During this last snowstorm, the city utilized the new Smart 911 system, and it was an effective way to quickly distribute road safety and weather-related information. We will continue to use it more as a notification tool, so please register. Enrollment is also open for the 2024 Hometown Heroes Program. The deadline to apply is March 31st, and this is going to be the seventh year for the successful program that displays banners with the names, images, and dates of service of active military members and veterans throughout the city from mid-May through mid-August. The program is funded through private donations with no fee to participate. Information on application requirements and how to apply is available at cityofsummit.org/hometownheroes. Thank you to all our veterans who are out there. The city will once again be hosting its paid summer internship program, which I know Councilman Vartan is going to be very excited about. We’re going to host our paid summer internship program for college students that take place during the month of June. Applications will be accepted from students who are Summit residents beginning on March 1st through March 22nd, with interviews being scheduled in late March and early April. This is a wonderful program and an opportunity for college students to learn about municipal operations and gain valuable work experience. More information will be available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. And it was a huge success last year, so be on the lookout for that. Okay. I would like to... Next business is historical minute. I would like to invite a special guest who is an author and former Summit resident, Anthony Ellis, who is an author and former resident. Councilman Boyer, I know you know him personally, so would you like to say something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you mind?
Absolutely.
I was waiting for Councilman Pulaski to do his Summit Minute and then swing it on over here to me, you know, but maybe next time. You know, the 90s in Summit invoked a sense of nostalgia. Yeah, at that time, the Summit pool still had a high dive. The Y had only one pool and an indoor track. My graduating class in 1996 comprised of 160 students. Investors Field was called Tatlock. It had grass, which was maintained by our dedicated city employees, and Thompson Sporting Goods was on the opposite side of the street where the antique shop is now. Anthony Ellis... Anthony Ellis grew up during that time. My apologies. There we go. Anthony Ellis grew up during that era, attending Jefferson School, middle school, and ultimately graduating from Summit High School. Later in life, he penned a memoir titled Climbing the Summit, chronicling his upbringing in Summit. His story illustrates how Summit’s supportive community not only helped him climb the Summit, but also conquer mountains throughout life. His narrative not only inspires, but also sheds light on the challenges faced by some black Americans unfairly labeled as Oreos or deemed to be acting white. Due to differing beliefs, friendships, appearances, viewpoints, or interests, Ellis’s memoir is a testament to embracing one’s true self, akin to my own experience. As we honor Black History Month and reflect on the historical minute, I am proud to introduce Anthony “Tony” Ellis, the sole author depicting the experiences of a black individual growing up in Summit, New Jersey.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for having me. This is an extreme pleasure, and thank you also for inviting me to the event earlier this afternoon where I was able to expand on this. Why am I here? I’m proud to be from Summit. It’s left its mark on me, indelible mark. It’s where my identity began. As Jamal was pointing out, it’s also where we define ourselves. It’s where my dreams began. I grew up at my grandparents’ house, just down the hill, on the other side of town, with my older brothers Cory and Tyrone, my mother Evelyn, my grandparents. Dad wasn’t around, but we were a village of aunts, uncles, and cousins at my house. Family was our wealth. My grandparents brought our family from the South up to Summit for a better life. My brothers, cousins, and I played around the yard, sipping crisp, clean air with sunrays upon us as fancy cars drove by. My grandma said, “Black people deserve just as much as white people. We just have to work harder for it.” Not too unlike MLK’s dream for the pursuit of happiness for all. I took it a step further. I saw what this town had in front of me, and I wanted it. From the mansions and luxury cars to the families of moms and dads, with love, I chose to embrace it. I was immersed in it, fell in love with some of its people and what it’s shown me. Why don’t I deserve this? So I pursued it, in spite of what others may have defined me as. It made me feel like I wasn’t who I was supposed to be. But I laid my own path. The journey took me through laughter with my friends and cries with my mother. I think as a child, you don’t realize how much your parents are doing for you until later, when you’re a parent yourself. I took breaths around this world, and it brought me here. I’m now living part of the dreams that I saw in Summit, the visions of family, of love, of a home, and now I pass this dream down to my children. A part of me feels indebted to Summit, the people who helped me along the way, including my family. That’s why I’m here. And for some of you who have read the book and want to know what happens next, I can’t wait to tell you. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Anthony, what is the name of your book?
Climbing the Summit.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just wanted to know how Esther Ellis is related.
Oh, yeah.
Esther and I went to school together.
I asked her.
She’s in the book.
And that’s why you’re extraordinary.
Yeah.
Council President?
Yes?
I just wanted to present Tony a gift from Council.
Oh...
He’s also a lacrosse player, everybody.
Can I say something?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony, for coming to speak with us this evening. It was a pleasure to read your book, even though you left us on that incredible cliffhanger. We both went to Jefferson, and I also spent a summer working as a busboy in an Italian restaurant, Marco Polo’s rival, La Postaria for me. I noticed you wrote about experiences when you were treated differently by the police because of the color of your skin. I think it’s important to acknowledge that history. I’m thankful for the Chief of Police and the Interfaith Council’s Anti-Racism Committee working together regularly to address bias in policing. But it’s also, I think, important to acknowledge the contrast between this meeting and the last. Tonight, we’re celebrating your story and black history in Summit, while last council meeting, we passed an ordinance over the objection of the Interfaith Council and the black community. So my point is this: The decisions we make here impact individual people’s lives every day, and we need to take that responsibility seriously. And if we want to celebrate a part of our community, we should also make sure we hear their voices. Thank you very much.
I just actually want to say something as well. I grew up in Colorado, and oftentimes, people say, “Why did you move to New Jersey?” And there was a time that I was going to move back to Colorado. I drug my husband, who was one of five, and we went to Colorado in Fort Collins, and we looked around, and one thing I noticed that was drastically different than Summit, and that is that this is a walking town. When we first moved here, I would cross the street, I would go to Franklin, and I would see all the moms and dads and guardians standing by the door, waiting for their children to come out. And people are walking down the street, they’re walking dogs, and they’re connecting with each other. When I was back in Colorado, there was not a single soul in the street. I don’t know where they were. It’s an outdoor living. Maybe they were on the trails. But when we got back home, I said to my husband, “Summit is where the community is. It’s where my children need to grow up. It’s a place where people are accepting and where we really embrace each other. So I want to thank you, Anthony, for coming tonight and sharing your story, and I look forward to reading your book. So, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to presentations. We’re going to... Matt DeLorey... Oh, come on in. Okay. It’s our 2023 Affordable Housing Annual Status Report by Matt DeLorey, our DCS Assistant Director and Municipal Housing Liaison. Do you need anything from us, Matt?
If I can’t turn this on, Madam Clerk will help me with the presentation, but... Good evening, Council President, Mayor, and Council colleagues, and those people in the hall here tonight and watching at home. My name is Matthew DeLorey. I’m one of the Assistant Directors in the Department of Community Services, and Council appointed me as the Municipal Housing Liaison. In a sense, I act as a point of contact for the city’s Mount Laurel obligation. Every municipality in New Jersey is required to participate in activities as a constitutional obligation to fulfill its role in providing affordable housing. And every year, we produce a report that I share with a committee that we formed, and then also come to Council and to the public to share that report. And the report is basically the activities that we carry out throughout the year to fulfill our obligation. We are in what’s called Round Three of Affordable Housing, and we are going into Round Four. Round Three spans the years of 2015 to 2025, and Round Four will begin 2025 and beyond. So what I do in the report, and by the way, all of this is listed online, as is my contact information, and for those of you that reach out to my office, you know that I make myself available to anyone anytime they have any questions, because this is a bit of an algorithm in regards to how it’s executed in New Jersey. It’s a very unique way the state does this, and the concept can be difficult. This report is listed online. I’m not going to go through the entire report, because you can consume it on your own, but I have highlighted a few yellow sections, and I can just talk you through them. It’s broken down by quarters. So if you could go to that first yellow section... Thank you, Rosie. So in a sense, the three main prongs of an affordable housing program is to develop actual units. The second is to spend money to rehabilitate existing units, and the third is to provide affordability assistance for people with regards to down payments or HOA fees. So one of the things that we looked at this year was what’s called a marketable-to-affordable study. This is where we take money from our trust fund. And by the way, the funds that we use for affordable housing are not tax dollars. We have an ordinance for when development occurs in the city. A developer pays into the trust fund a fee, and that fee is used to fund the activities. And in a sense, one of the methods that you can use to develop units is to take a unit that is market rate and use trust fund money to supplement and either purchase or purchase down the cost to make it affordable. Summit is an affluent community, so that is a very difficult task, and the cost is high, but we’re constantly monitoring the market to see if trust fund money can be used to supplement the cost of a rental unit that might become affordable for use. Another thing I’ll point out as you scroll down to the next piece is the city updated its operating manual. People have a lot of questions about, “Well, how does somebody get qualified?” This is a very specific method. The operating manual basically outlines the methodology that’s used to select people amongst a host of other things that it does. But I can tell you that there are very specific qualifications that you have to meet, and we can talk a little bit later when we look at the website and how people at home, if you feel that you are in need of affordable housing, can get information on how to prequalify for a unit in the city. But the operating manual includes a lot of details on how people get qualified for the units in the city. A lot of people don’t know what’s available, so we said, “Well, why don’t we put a flyer together so that people can actually take a look at what their options are?” The City of Summit’s website, cityofsummit.org/ahforaffordablehousing, is something we’re really proud of. We put together a lot of resources for people who are looking for affordable housing. And when we’re done with the report, I’ll just have Rosie bring up the website, and we can kind of just look quickly at it. But we did develop a flyer to let people know that there are options for you if you’re interested, and we did share it with the Interfaith Council, and we’ll be sharing with a number of other members in the community to make sure that they’re aware that there are a lot of resources for you. We skipped over one. I don’t know if you did that on purpose, but if you go back, it is Broad Street West. And last year, the Council did decide that, after hearing from the public, that there were other ways to develop, and certainly a component of that was affordable housing. It should be made very clear that the Council continues to look at ways to provide affordable housing, although that mechanism at that time wasn’t appropriate. So we do put that in the report, because it’s important for people to know the history of the development of Broad Street West, et cetera. Many of you are aware that Morris Habitat did complete its project. They are going through an issue with qualifying people, but once they get through that, there will be people living there, but they are finished. And in December, they did have a ribbon cutting. We got to meet a lot of the families. It was very moving, and it’s always important to see the humanity of the work that we do that’s sometimes mechanical, but the real lives that are impacted when you get to wake up every morning in a safe and stable place that can really set the foundation for a very meaningful life that we take for granted. So we’re happy that they were able to do that here, and they concluded their work. Part of a legal agreement was that on the other side of the fence from Morris Habitat, there is a city property on which our plan describes the possibility for two units. Nothing has been decided there; that just continues to be explored. But there had been a rumor that we had made decisions or anything had happened, but nothing has been decided there yet that continues to be looked at. We’ll go to the website in a minute, but we’ll skip to the Bristol Meyer Squibb. When commercial entities... Not only is it that when residential buildings take place, where a new home is built, that a developer pays into the trust fund, but there’s also a state non-residential development fee, and in this case, Bristol Meyer Squibb ended up adding volume to a building, which would then trigger the fee. That coincided with years of tax evaluations that, in the end, calculated a very large fee of $4,625,000-plus. That currently is under protest, which is a right of Bristol Meyer Squibb to look at the taxation methodology. So that money’s been put in escrow, and that’s currently being heard by a court. But if that does go through, there would be a huge opportunity for the city to continue to invest in affordable housing opportunities. So that’s an example of a very large non-residential development fee that’s fairly uncommon. And then last year, Council amended the ordinance for affordable housing and did a couple things. One, that the ordinance existed in lots of different places within the city ordinances, so we brought them all into the development regulation ordinances, so it sort of consolidated so that if you’re developing in the city, you don’t have to wander through the ordinances; they’re in one place. The other thing it did while aligning it with a lot of legal documents and state regulations is it closed a little bit of a loophole where people were knocking down a house but leaving one wall in the basement and saying, “I put an addition on the basement wall,” which is technically building an entire new home and saying, “Oh, well, I really didn’t. I left the basement wall there.” So there is a definition for building a new house, which was much needed, because there were people taking advantage of that loophole. And then the other thing is that the regulations allow us to charge 1% for affordable housing fee. The state allows you up to 1.5%. We looked at 15 other towns, and we were one of only four that was charging 1%, so we did move up to 1.5%, which is very custom for developers to be paying in our area. So that was the fee. The Summit Housing Authority is working on funding for rehabilitation, which the city could participate in. Council last year did a resolution of support for that, and as they examine their own funding mechanisms, it’s very possible that they will be able to rehabilitate a lot of their units, which the city might be able to use as part of its plan. So we look forward to working with them and supporting them on that. And then I will just very briefly note... And then I will just very briefly note that surprisingly, in 2023, the state decided to try to pass, after no legislation for 15 years on this matter, a bill through the lame duck session. Fortunately, there were a lot of parties that stepped up and said, this really, in this day and age, is not the way we should be passing important legislation like this. And the second they moved back into regular session, continued to press the bill forward. There are a lot of voices letting them know that there's a lot of changes that have to happen to this bill. Unfortunately, it definitely will leave municipalities in a very difficult position, where we will probably very much continue to be sued or to be challenged in a way that immunity from builder's remedy will always be the carrot dangling before us, and that puts the stakeholders and residents and municipalities in a very difficult position. So we do hope the legislature will come to its senses and listen to municipalities and the people that they serve to make sure that that law represents a very fair and equitable way to legislate affordable housing. I will proceed down here to see, this is a kind of a famous chart. We have a lot of goals that we have to complete in 2025, up through 2025. We have the balance of an unmet need of 702, which over the course of the plan is brought down to 638 at the moment. And then our legal plan had this little carve-out for new units, and we are at 25 of 50 for those new units. This is on the website, and you can learn about how we got here and why, and how these different projects participate in these numbers, but this is currently what we're facing. I'll point out that the new legislation will dictate new numbers for the City of Summit, and these will not reset. They will be in addition to what will be coming down the pipeline. I'm happy to say there are a lot of members of Council who are taking this very seriously, and we do hope to make it so that the city is both continuing what has been a very good historic track record for maintaining its obligation, and at the same time isn't unequitably challenged in a way where building becomes such that the fabric of the community is lost. And again, that's very important to all of us, so we'll keep an eye on that. If we scroll down a little further, one of the things that we have to do as part of our plan is to make sure that we let people know what's available. So we get a lot of, we get phone inquiries, and we get web signups. So these first two, I asked the admin agent to start to track these kinds of things, and you can see our web signups are continuing to maintain in the 30s on average. Unfortunately, the very last column is how many units became available in 2023, and you will see 1 in January and zeros straight through. When somebody is in a unit, they normally do not move out of it, and that's why increasing the number of units in the city is one of the things that we really are trying to do, again, while honoring the fabric and the integrity of the community as it develops. And then we're obligated to report the financials. What I did was took the December bank rec and show you that the current balance is 1.9 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then I went a step further and used our financial software to break down both what we earned in fees month by month, as well as what we earned in our banking account with interest month by month, so that you can get a sense of the income that we're earning with our development. And if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that I'm just reporting that, yay, we met this year and we're plugging forward. And if I could just, real quick, have you just visit the website so people could see that, Rosie, I appreciate that. And then if there are questions, and then I'll be out of your hair. So when you land on the webpage, you'll see you have two options. If you scroll down on this page, this is where people who are looking for affordable housing and resources can find them. And before you scroll down, Rosie, on the left, if you want to learn about the plan and contact information and the logistics of the mechanisms of what we do in City Hall to fulfill this plan, you would click on the left. But if you don't mind, we'll just take you through real quick what residents will find. And if you scroll down, you'll see this is the flyer, so Housing Assistant Options. You have a list you can get on. You have Home Improvement Assistance and Affordability Assistance. Those are those three buckets, and you can visit the site to learn how you can take advantage of those. The next is what kind of income you have to make and the number of people in your household to qualify. And so this is a little chart that'll show you how to qualify for, and what the salaries are for what you would need to do in order to qualify for an affordable housing unit. And if you keep scrolling down, there's like a maybe six, seven, eight field questionnaire. This is just to get on the list. And by the way, most of us have nieces or nephews that are just starting out in the world of work that need affordable housing, and that's really what this is for. And so you should encourage those people to sign up. We want to teach young people, I know, I was dying to get out of my house, and at my age, I could afford to find an apartment, but that is not likely nowadays. But the lessons I learned by living on my own and picking through laundry that I wasn't willing to wash, but I eventually did, was a huge life lesson on how to take care of myself. So please encourage people to sign up, and they can fill that out. Next is Rehabilitation Assistance. If you earn a certain income and you need a roof, an air conditioner unit, I can explore that with you if you have interest or you think somebody in Summit may qualify for that. If you keep scrolling down, I think this is one thing we're really proud of. A lot of people call our office and say, oh, my God, I need, my friend is really desperate in need of housing. And as you can see, with only one unit becoming available, this isn't a solution for emergent housing. But we did really put together a very comprehensive list of resources, Union County, the DCA, Grayson Town. There are just a ton of resources that people can use to supplement their costs from energy and rental and other kinds of assistance that people can be taking advantage of, and these exist throughout the county and beyond, and there's a huge list here. So I could go on about this, but I appreciate your time in having me share this report with you and the public. And if there are questions, I'd be happy to take them, but as well, for sake of time, I'm available, and people can reach out anytime if they have further questions.
Right. We'll take, we're gonna take questions from Council. I just, I want to, and we'll take some questions also after Council's done with, from the public.
Sure.
I just want to say that, thank you for a great presentation. You've done an excellent job really managing this through the city. It is not easy, and you are absolutely right that Summit has always done an excellent job on affordable housing, and this is a very impassioned topic. So I just want to say, as we talk about it on Council and questions come up from the public, that we are all, you know, we treat each other with respect, and that last year was really about conflating, I think what happened was Broad Street West got conflated in some aspects with affordable housing. So just putting that out there, that this is about affordable housing, and we can have a bigger discussion about market rates with a tiny bit of affordable housing. But tonight, for your purpose, I'd like to take questions from the Council.
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you, Matt. You're always so eloquent and articulate in the way you speak, and I think I call you more now than Director Schreger, so I'm not sure if that's a win for the night.
Or Administrator Rogers.
Yes. But I just want to thank you. I watched your last presentation and all the questions from the residents the other day again, and spoke with you. I have a couple of questions regarding the rehabilitation numbers. Has Summit Housing Authority given an update on their relationship, continuing it or not, with Orbach, and have, do you know if they've made any progress with their housing director? And maybe I should ask you, Councilwoman Boyer, if we'll be getting an update on that process.
Yes, so right now, the Housing Authority is looking for an executive director. So the job description has been posted. The contract with Orbach is, has not been re-signed, so essentially, you have to go through the process again. And it's, honestly, it's very unfortunate, because now the residents would have to wait, you know, another year or so. But I know that the Housing Authority is working diligently to get the ball rolling, though.
And to be clear, and so the public knows, the Summit Housing Authority is a separate entity to which Council appoints people, but it's federally funded. Our local Mount Laurel is funded through those development fees that we collect, so that's a local effort. But we don't connect with each other, other than obviously, we try to participate and help each other where we can.
But we would still get credit for those.
The rehabilitation of those, we believe, yes, would participate in our program. We have a 1.3 million obligation. That's 131 rehabilitated units, approximately 10,000 apiece, and we've spent approximately 700,000 of those funds on rehabilitation.
I think it's really important to point this out, and one of the reasons is because these Aspire credits are going to be expiring at some point. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I think it's really important that the community has these discussions, because our own Summit, resident Summit Housing Authority residents deserve to have these units rehabilitated, and they will count towards our credit. So I think it's an urgent conversation that we all need to have as a community, and hopefully we can find a director as soon as possible. The second question was, can you just walk me through the interest paid numbers either tonight or at another point? It just, it wasn't making sense to me, because is it all in a checking account, and does it have to stay in a checking account, or are there rules around that?
Yeah, I would defer to the CFO on the maintenance of the funds, certainly, but I don't know if she wants to comment, but we'd be happy to share. Everything is.
Loaded question.
Councilwoman Hamlet, you kind of answered your own question. It does need to remain in a bank account. The interest is able to be spent on affordable housing efforts, but it has to be maintained separately from all other banking.
But is that number right, 53,000 paid interest to date?
I would assume so. I'd have to look up the bank.
I mean, we've written, we rewrote a $1.4 million check to Habitat, so that account has gone all over the map.
Yeah, that's it, we can.
But that's the interest accrues, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Is that it? Okay. Any other comments?
Yes. So, so just to be clear, our current status is we have 25 out of 50, right? And the 638 is the balance. Now, you did mention that when Fair Share comes back, I think Round Four, they will add to the 638. Will it be an additional?
There will definitely be additional units added somehow.
Will it be an additional three-figure number?
Well, the last round was determined through litigation. People were sued by Fair Share Housing after CO was disbanded. What the legislature is trying to do now is create a formula and reinvigorate a standardized state across the statewide in which municipalities, through what's called the Jacobson ruling, come up with a calculated number that you will owe. And so they're right now formulating what that obligation will be, which is why it's contentious, because what number you use and how you formulate that can be, can dramatically inflate or impact the number of what you owe.
Agreed. And.
So the number will not be going down, no?
Realistically, just where we stand right now, if we needed to add 638 units in Summit, which is dense, is that even?
The number isn't intended to, the number is aspirational in that the economy could tank tomorrow. You could build nothing. We've been in a very good economy lately, so there's been a lot of building, but that's how, and there was, there was a lot of methodology, but how it was determined what Summit's unmet need was, what we as a community owed. So no, you wouldn't go out and build 638 units tomorrow, but that is what was determined legally, is what Summit's obligation was if we were to participate in the building of affordable housing across the statewide effort to do so. And frankly, a lot of communities, twofold. One, we see around us a lot of buildings, so we do see a press for density. Most of us have, as Mr. Ellis shared, and you've shared about growing up, is that communities have sort of stayed the same for a very long time, and a page is turning, partly because municipalities, I'm happy to say Summit not being one of them, but did fail to meet their obligation to some degree. I know places where they've built 250 units, and there's not a single affordable one, and that's really not too long ago. So there have been municipalities over time that have not built properly. At the same time, yeah, there's, there's, there's a change about how we're developing and what's happening, and I think that's why as a community, and a lot of communities are struggling with wanting to meet their obligation, but at the same time realizing there is only a certain capacity after which we begin to completely change what we are as a community, and we're right there.
And just to be clear, affordable, affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to improve diversity in the town, correct?
Well, restrictive zoning was definitely rooted in racism. There was a lot of zoning for a long period of time that was exclusionary in nature, and that's talking specific to Summit. I'm talking through the history of zoning laws was sort of rooted in an exclusionary way. People wanted to make it so that, well, you can't really afford to build here, so you'll have to go somewhere else.
No, I understand that. I understand the past history of redlining and exclusionary zones. I'm talking about right now, right? So we build affordable housing. Is, are we telling the community that our community will be more diverse, or are we just adding units, right? There's, affordable housing is not aligned with diversity, though, per se, right? It's more aligned with socioeconomic status, right? How much money you have to afford.
The obligations and the qualifications you meet are not related to your race. They're related to your income.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before I go to the public, I just want to say, we introduced a resolution for the Mount Laurel Committee. Did you want to just touch briefly on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple groups working on this. There's the Affordable Housing Committee that by our legal agreement meets once a year. We met actually two or three times when we introduced our new administrative, et cetera. We are now going into Round Four, and there will be a confidential nature to the work we do. Governing bodies have a right and often can, and permissible by law, be in confidence, because in a sense, when, when we negotiate on behalf of the public, if we all got in a room and said, we're going to offer this, everyone is listening. So there are, there is a need to have confidentiality. It's been made very clear that the Mount Laurel Committee will be working on the tying-up of Round Three and the planning for Round Four, but that it will only be for recommendations. The Committee itself will make no decisions. Any decision that would be made would be made in the public eye by common counsel. It's just that there will be a confidential nature to some of the work that we'll be doing to prepare, and it was advised by myself and our affordable housing attorney that stakeholders from our planning board, our zoning board, common counsel, et cetera, participate in that group while other groups are formed to continue to figure out how we meet our obligation. So that's what that Mount Laurel Subcommittee is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to open it up.
Can I just do a quick thing, just from what you said in your report? Thank you, first of all. And thank you for ensuring our compliance. Thank you for making it much easier to understand this incredibly complex process, but I just want to make sure one thing you said did not get lost, which is that individual people who already live in Summit, if they qualify by their income, can get improvements to their home through the $1.3 million that we have, right? So people that already live here.
Correct.
Maybe they bought their house 30 years ago, right? But now their income qualifies. They need a new roof. They can talk to you.
They need an air conditioner, hot water heater, yes. They are allowed to get improvements in their home.
I just want to make sure everybody heard that, very clearly. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Orton.
Councilman, or Councilman President. Just a quick, Matt, thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate it. So in order to qualify for affordable housing, it's based on, my understanding, the median income of the municipality?
No, no, no. It's the income of the person. There's a, we live in what's called Region Two. If, if you want, you can take a look at that income chart that I showed on the website. The very bottom, there's a link that you can click to open up for the entire state. Summit lives within Region Two, so Union, Morris, a number of other counties. Anyone living in those counties, based on how much income you make, then allows you to be eligible for affordable housing. When a unit comes up in Region Two, you, in a sense, could participate in getting that unit, and it's based on your income. And I don't want to get too into like low, very low, moderate income, but it's based on how much you earn and the number of people in your household.
But if a developer came into town and developed, say, 10 units or 20 units of whatever, right? A certain percentage, 15% of that has, if it's an apartment, 15% needs to be designated for affordable housing, correct?
Yeah, that is called our multifamily set-aside ordinance. So anytime you build five or more, and it's rental, 15% have to be affordable, and if it's for purchase, 20% have to be. So, I'm sorry.
And is there a, I guess I'm probably missing something. I read something about the median income of the municipality. Is that where they determine how much the rent would be?
It's of the individual.
So if they, if the normal rent would be for a two-bedroom apartment, $5,000, how do they determine what that rent would be for affordable housing?
It's dictated by income, and there's math to be done, and you're qualified by proving income status, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah, so even if you built a complex of 10 units, and each unit was going for 1.2 million or et cetera, or the rents were very high, there would be a set-aside that would allow for those to be affordable, and the people that would be qualified in them would pay, be paying based on their income.
So if a teacher making $60,000 could theoretically be in one of those 1.2 million?
Yeah, absolutely. And what happens is, and that's why we have the sign-up, is we encourage people, the Summit Housing Authority had traditionally been, and this is changing geographic preference and all these things, you had to live in Summit, it's beginning to change because of funding. And I don't want to speak too much about their program, because I'm not an expert in it, but the way the city's Mount Laurel program works, it's like a, I don't want to say the word lottery, but it's a random selection process. So you could have been one of those 30 people that signed up a year ago, and your name never gets drawn, and you could have literally signed up yesterday, and you come, come a- and a unit could come, come available, and you get pulled out. And if you qualify, it's yours. Which, you could argue that there's pros and cons to both methods. But at the end of the day, I find the random selection to be hopeful, because when you're looking for housing, the fact that you could be pulled at any time is kind of exciting. The questionnaire on the city's website is for Summit only. There are two other companies I listed on the website. By signing up with them, you're signing up for 40, 50 municipalities at one time. CGP and H, and the other company begins with a P, Panone. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it. But, so. Piazza, yep, Piazza, yep. And where you're signing up for a bunch. So I always tell people, if you want to catch a fish, and you have 30 fishing poles in the water, you're more likely to get one than just one. So you should be signing up at Summit site, but you should also be signing up on all of those sites, because you live in Region Two, and you'd be qualifying to live in a number of towns.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Smallwood. I'd like to go to the public, but before I do, Councilman Plasky, Councilwoman Miniger? Either of you? Okay. I'm going to ask the public, if anybody wants to come up and speak, please say your name, your address. And I'm going to ask, with a show of hands, who is here for affordable housing? Just, I want to make sure we manage our time.
Is this only for?
Only for affordable housing for right now. Yep.
I will sit down.
Okay. I'm just going to ask.
It's all yours.
Thank you. I'm just going to say, if you could please keep it to three minutes-ish, that would be wonderful.
Probably one minute, Councilperson. Thank you. I'm a third, Dennison Harriel, 140 Broad Street, Summit, Pastor Wallace Chapel Church. I don't have a question. I just want to make a statement. I'm a 34-year resident of Summit. And I problem dating myself, because I've lived long enough to go start with Encyclopedia, World Book Encyclopedia, Britannica, now Google and Wikipedia. And I just want to say to the council and to the audience gathered here this evening that I am a passionate advocate for affordable housing based upon my three principles. Is there a need? Is it doable? Is it the right thing to do? And I just want to commend the city for bringing on board Matt Delory. Because in my 34 years, this gentleman is a walking, walking encyclopedia, Google, knowledgeable, passionate, and committed to this job. And I, I, I think the city and council, mayor, has commended to bringing him on board and keeping him here for the job witnessed tonight, that I have been witnessing him doing since he has been here. So I just want to stand and say, we owe him a debt of gratitude in performing his job in an area that even the governor and legislators don't know that much about, even though they profess to. So I personally, and he didn't pay me to say this, so I want you to know. Thank you, Matt, for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Reverend Harriel.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Ellen Boylan, B-O-Y-L-A-N. I reside at 137 Tulip Street in Summit. Hi, Matt. Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Councilperson Ellen, and the other members of the council. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a group that's formed in Summit. At Home in Summit is our name. And we are a bipartisan group of Summit volunteers who have come together to advocate for affordable housing in our town. For the obvious reasons that we've heard about, there is a tremendous need for affordable housing. We've witnessed our neighbors being displaced from their homes because of rent increases or property sales. Long-term families who have been in Summit have been forced to move out. The school district reports that for this year, '23, '24, there are 12 homeless families right now. And that's compared to six in the last school year and five the year before that. So it's an accelerating crisis that we're seeing. Similarly, the Intervahs Council reports that for the Summit Warm Hearts Program, 20 of the 43 people they're serving this winter who are homeless were renting in Summit prior to becoming homeless. So what we're seeing is there are no affordable housing options for people. If they run into any trouble, there's a bump in the road, they're homeless, or they have nowhere to go, and they have to look for housing outside of Summit. And for families, that means uprooting your children, leaving the school district, losing your support networks. Another reason we want to see Summit support affordable housing is to support our workforce. There are people who work in this town, who provide services we all enjoy, who simply cannot afford to live here. Having affordable housing options for the workforce would strengthen our community by building ties between people who work here and live here. And it would also bolster our economy by providing stable, quality housing to the workforce. It's also, as, as other people have mentioned, it's in our history, it's in our character to want to support affordable housing. There have been numerous incident, uh, times over the past 60 years where business, common counsel, nonprofits have come together. And we've done a fantastic job of building hundreds of units of affordable housing and giving families opportunity. But you have before you, and by you, I mean the city has before you now, a proposal from the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation, which we at Home in Summit urge you to support. The corporation consists of Summit residents who are volunteers. It's a bipartisan board. They have expertise in real estate and finance. And they have put together an awesome proposal for 42 affordable units on the Firehouse site. It makes a ton of sense for Summit. It's financed chiefly through federal and state dollars with a contribution from the Summit Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is funded, as Matt pointed out, by developers, not by taxpayers. We think it is a very sensible project, and it's the right thing to do. At the end of the day, affordable housing is really about opportunity. It's about giving opportunity to families and children. There are many hard-working families out there who.
Ms. Boylan, I'm so sorry. Just.
I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
Um, there are many hard-working families out there who belong in Summit as much as any of us do. They just can't be here, because they can't pay the rent, and they can't pay the house prices. And we want to see more opportunity given to these families. Thank you.
Ms. Boylan?
Can you, can I have that for?
Excuse me, Ms. Boylan? Ms. Boylan, just a quick, quick question for you.
Sure.
Um, the, the 42 unit, is that on a website? Or how can I?
Oh, that, I'm so glad you said that. We do have a website, athomeinsummit.org. And we do reference the corporation's project for the 42 units. All the, all the information's there. So you can find it there. And please visit our website.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boylan, for your comments and obviously your passion for such an important issue. It doesn't have to be tonight, but if you could just follow up with the clerk regarding the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation, when that was established, just so we have some history. I just wasn't sure when that was established, or if it was restarted and established at a different year. If we could just get specifics on that.
Sure. I do, I do know that. It was started when the first Habitat development was, so that's like 18 years ago. 2010. Thank you, Reverend Harriel. And then it was, it was dormant for many years. But it is now revived, because people see the need for it, and they are, you know, are local experts who are willing to do this as volunteers and keep the interest of Summit front and center as they do it.
Thank you very much. And then there's no relation between the Summit Housing, Summit Affordable Housing Corporation and the Summit Housing Authority as a pass-through or anything? I just, so I, I just want to make sure.
I'm probably not the right person to, to answer that question.
No problem. Just curious if there was any relation between those two. That's all.
Okay.
Ellen said, said that there was something submitted to us, to the city?
Who did you submit to?
I didn't submit anything. It's the.
Oh, I thought, I thought you said.
No, I said the Affordable Housing Corporation has presented a plan to the city.
Oh, so when, who, who was involved in that?
It was presented to Matt Delory and other people in the city.
Can we make sure council gets the briefing on that as soon as possible?
Yeah, we, we, the, the intention was to have the Mount Laurel Subcommittee just review it peripherally. But that would definitely be something that would be shared with council. Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, I, I just want to, I don't know if it would be appropriate to, in a public forum, but maybe, you know, Ms. Boylan, if you could maybe provide the names or how we could contact those 12 families that are homeless to either the clerk or to Council President Ellen, to see if there's something that we can do in the meantime to help those 12 families.
Yeah, it's not, I don't have that information. I think that's protected privacy information from the school district. You could reach out to the district and see if there's any way to help those families, but I wouldn't know the names of them.
Okay, because it would be helpful so that.
Sure.
We could, if, obviously, if we know who the families are, we can certainly try and help them.
Sure.
On, on an immediate basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just mechanically, so everyone knows, as the municipal housing liaison, my job is to be a point of contact. So it's very common that I may be approached by someone where I'll spend just a, a brief time vetting or understanding some of the mechanics of it. In this case, because we formed the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, the next step would be to bring it to that group, after which it would come to council. So, just so everyone is aware of the mechanics and timing of everything.
Yeah. I think, too, it's an interesting thing. So this is all affordable housing, but there are also regular developers and investors that come to the city. And I think historically, they'll reach out to anybody. The mayor, the administrator, City Hall, you. So even getting arms around, how do we handle that process? So, because in the past, it's been very loose. And there are investors, there are businesses, there are individuals who come and say, "I want to be a part of Summit." But I think we need to get our, our arms around the process. So that, different for non, for affordable housing and regular investors for private property. But I still think we need some clarification and guidelines.
And historically, there are many paths in which a developer can come to the city and request or discuss certain things. But you're right. I think in today's day and age, where you really do want transparency, and where the public has really said, "We want to participate and make sure we understand it," that having a very clear process would give both the, the, the public comfort and as well make sure everyone understood that if somebody were to be approached, that they would know that there's a path forward. So I happen to agree. And under your leadership, I think we'll be able to accomplish that. So.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. Yep.
All right. Okay. So I'm just going to reiterate, name, address, and three minutes. Anybody?
Hi, I'm Antonette Lavecchia, L-A-V-E-C-H-I-A, 34 Broad Street. Mayor and council, thank you for having us.
This is about affordable housing, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Well, it's a, it's a story, I guess. So 17 years ago, my family and I opened a store downtown. You know, at my daily store closing, I would come back home. And while I was somewhat connected to the community, it wasn't until I moved to Summit almost seven years ago that I can really say that I engaged and became, excuse me, a true hilltopper, even only as a transfer. As of today, I sit on several boards and committees alongside many of you on council and in the audience. I also offer up our store for collections, schools, Grace, Junior League, and many other nonprofits in our area. And honestly, I wouldn't want it any other way. Being part of some, of the Summit community is something that gives me immense sense of pride and belonging. And the reason I'm sharing this information is that I wholeheartedly stand behind At Home in Summit, giving more people who work in the town the opportunity to possibly move into town and make an impact in their own way. How great would it be to engage more business owners or retail employees, or teachers, or law enforcement, or fire, or government employees, to have the chance to put in for affordable housing in Summit? And wouldn't it be amazing for those same people to become as involved as I have been since I've moved to town? Working and living in the same city offers several advantages, such as a shorter commute, which is awesome, by the way, increased work-life balance, and the opportunity to build stronger connections within the local community. It could also lead to a better understanding of the local culture and amenities, fostering a sense of belonging and investment in our community. I'm hopeful that the council will take the opportunity to work with At Home in Summit and get more affordable housing units in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Good evening. Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, at 11 Sunset Drive. And first, Matt, I want to echo what he said about how, how reachable he is. He's spent the past year listening to a lot of my crazy ideas, very patiently. I did have a couple of questions for you that, if I could ask them all and then dump them on your lap, there aren't that many. You, your, your chart, you know, we've seen it this year. Last year shows 25 of our 50 units coming online of the, the 50 that are due in 18 months. But of those 25, two are on Ashwood Court, which your report lists as still up in the air. The city's still trying to figure out what to do. And then six or seven are the Morris Avenue development that is still in the permitting process. So my question is sort of like, how far down the line do these units have to be for them to count when the day of reckoning comes? And I guess it's really 17 months. My second question, this is the last one. Given the size of the check that Bristol Myers Swibb wrote to the trust fund, could, are, are we expecting another sizable check from Onex? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So first inform, the, the first question, Claire, Claire, just real quick, the first answer, your first question is, the legal agreement allows for two units. So in a sense, the city has made an effort. And so in a sense, they are counted in the plan. So, that's definitely a part of the plan. And then the second was, which?
Triconal.
Triconal, same thing. The, once the board passed the resolution, that it became real, it becomes realized in the plan. Yep. The, I should make note that the $4 million, there's a process by which you can protest, and what that does is requires the city to put the money in an interest-bearing estor accounts separate, so we don't spend it, until that ruling is said and done. So, in a sense, that's when that will know, and hopefully, it'll be soon, if our tax evaluation did calculate properly to make the $4.6 million, the money that they actually owe us. What Claire's talking about is another large complex within the city in which they're going to be demolishing and doing a lot of work. What triggers the non-develop, non-residential development fee is the adding of volume. So, I don't know if you know, when you're passing Kings on the left, there was like an old gas station on the right, just as you're around the corner there, and they came before the planning board, and he was going to just bump out the attic, maybe like 10 or 15 square feet. The second he added volume to the building, that would, that then triggered the non-residential development fee. So, Onyx, depending on what they're building and what they're demolishing, would through this algorithm dictate whether or not the addition of volume would trigger the fee? And that's being worked out currently.
How quick do we have to spend the fee? Is there a statutory?
No, no, well, they, they become part of the trust fund, and we are now continuing to move forward. So, again, it's.
So, as we collect a fee?
Oh, yeah. You don't have to hold it for any period of time. No, exactly, no.
Okay.
Nope, exactly, yep.
Okay. Is there any other public question on affordable housing?
I would like, if there isn't any, I would just like to make a plea. If you know anyone who owns an apartment and would like to think about deed restricting, as I had mentioned, and this is part, by the way, what we're going to be doing potentially this year is the city had to pass a lead law where we have to inspect for lead in rental units. And in a sense, with that mailing list, we were considering the idea of letting people know, listen, if you have a rental unit and you want a deed restricted, the trust fund money can be used by you to rehabilitate that unit. It's a deed restriction for 30 years, so that's what causes the control and allows us to count the unit. But if there's an altruistic person out there, or somebody who wants to participate but maintain ownership of their home, there are opportunities. And we'll start to get into that as we meet and continue to come up with ideas on how to get additional units, of which we have a bunch.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, all. I appreciate your time. I'm sorry.
Oh, there's one more. Come on up. Yeah, yeah, come up. About affordable housing, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, my name's Harriet Trangucci. I'm at 125 Hillcrest in Summit. So, this resolution has been written in direct opposition to the revisionist watered-down resolution that was passed last week. Summit residents hope that council will pass this updated resolution to better clarify Summit's intent to meet affordable housing obligations. As we commemorate Black History Month, following the 40th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the Summit community recognizes the long history of discrimination and exclusionary policies at the federal, state, and local levels. As a community, we are committed to recognizing our past and working together to achieve Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream of bringing people together and addressing past wrongs. As such, we commend the greater Summit community for instituting the Mayor's Forum on Diversity, the Summit Interfaith Council Anti-Racism Committee, and the Summit Police Group. We look favorably upon the city of Summit's efforts to train employees in both anti-harassment and anti-discrimination. We, the undersigned, encourage the city of Summit to commit to fulfilling its obligations and to be a more inclusive community by addressing the legal and moral need for affordable housing by issuing the attached proclamation, as well as pledging to do the same. Whereas February is Black History Month, whereas January 15th, 2024, was the 40th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a day for action and service and is not simply about speeches, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. fought against discrimination and for fair housing opportunities for all. Whereas, beginning in the 1680s, leaders of the New Jersey Colony provided 150 acres of land to each white settling family and granted them an additional 150 acres for each enslaved black person brought into the colony. Whereas, by the early 1800s, New Jersey held over 2/3 of all enslaved black people in the North. Whereas, in 1830, New Jersey was the first northern state to legally disenfranchise black residents by restricting the right to vote to white men. Whereas, the New Jersey State Legislature opposed the emancipate, sorry, the Emancipation Proclamation and was the last northern state to abolish slavery. Whereas, redlining, the exclusion of black veterans from GI benefits for home purchases, and economically exclusionary zoning policies continued well into the 20th century in New Jersey. Whereas, the state of New Jersey has a long history of discrimination, which the New Jersey Supreme Court found in the South Burlington NAACP versus Mount Laurel Township. Whereas, the state of New Jersey has been working on redressing this, this history through increased affordable housing opportunities in each municipality. Whereas, each municipality, including the city of Summit, has an obligation to be part of this solution, and we, the mayor and common council proclaim that the city of Summit will construct or ensure the construction of the 50 new affordable housing units set forth in the city's fair share housing settlement by July 1st, 2025. So, this is a petition that was signed by many Summit residents, and we hope that you will consider passing it as a resolution.
Thank you. Can we take that? Can you give that to us?
It will be sent.
Okay.
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Boylan.
You know, I, I just want to be clear about this, because I don't want to conflate two different things. So, again, Matt, affordable housing, so we have 50 units. Theoretically, there could be no black people that move into those 50 units of affordable housing. Is that correct?
Based on income?
Just based on income, right?
You're qualified based on your income.
Okay. Because, you know, I don't want people to seem to think that, just because we call it affordable, that it's somehow linked to housing for black people. And I see that conflation sometimes. Now, listen, don't get me wrong, what the resident just came up here and said, hey, I'm, you know, I, I have no objection against that. What I'm saying is, we can't come with a mind state that this is somehow related to housing for black people. This is housing for socioeconomic status, right? Okay, I just want to be clear, because.
I think because its roots are in some level of bias to some degree, that the two live in similar realms, but to your point, the qualification of units is based on people's income.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to close the. Okay, I will make an exception for you. If you can come.
The first time I made a statement, this time is a question. This is my first time.
All right, and then we'll. Only for you, Reverend Harold. Only for you.
Thank you, Council President. My question, my question is that at the, is the council going to be considering this proposal by At Home in Summit soon? And the reason I ask that is because if, when you get it, you will see that there's a lot of money that's in the project financing of this that has to be spent by the end of December. So, I would encourage you to move expeditiously, because this is a win-win situation.
I would, I would just say that the council was elected in December and took office in January. In January, we met, at which point there was, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee formed, amongst other activities, and February is the very first meeting. So, there is a sense of urgency about, from the council, about meeting this obligation for sure, and having heard about the mechanics and some of the funding that will expire. It is definitely a top agenda item for the Mount Laurel Subcommittee to consider, and then for the larger group to consume. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And we have to bring it back out. Once the Mount Laurel Committee meets, the community's going to know, you know, we'll bring something to the community at some point. So, I don't have timing, but we understand the urgency.
Absolutely.
Because third round is coming to an end soon. So, absolutely. Okay. I'm officially closing out the presentation, and I am opening it to public comments. You can go, Matt, if you want. Absolutely. Yeah, before anybody else. I'm going to ask for public comments, name, address, and please keep it to three minutes, if possible. Thank you. And it's for anything not on the agenda.
Okay. Now.
Oh, you know what? Give everybody just a minute, just so we can hear you. Thank you, everybody. Bye. Bye, Esther. Bye, Anthony. You lost half your crowd.
Was it me? Something I said? Didn't say anything.
Almost there. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Where did Councilwoman Boylan go?
Who's not here? We miss, we're missing someone.
We're going to have to hold. Oh, he went to the restroom, okay. All right. Diego, can you shut the door so the noise isn't? Thank you. Okay. The floor is yours.
Oh, okay.
Name, address, and three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jill Lazar. I was a resident of Summit for over 20 years. I now live at 17 Franklin Terrace in South Orange. I am an attorney who has practiced municipal law for many years, and I have been a public defender in Roselle Park, Garwood, and Fanwood, where I am currently the public defender. I am here because, as a public defender, I am very concerned about the added section 316, entitled Resident Protection, that the council recently passed. As a legal matter, this section is invalid because it is preempted by state law. In 1982, New Jersey's Criminal Code was amended to eliminate inconsistencies, ambiguities, and overlapping and redundant provisions between state law and the separate laws of over 500 municipalities throughout New Jersey. The case of State v. Persirtia, 356 NJ, Super 461, is precisely on point for the rule that state law preempts municipal ordinances, such as the added section 316. I stand before you as a public defender, but also because State v. Persirtia was actually my first reported case as an attorney. That's how I'm so intimately familiar with it. In this case, Persirtia, the municipality of West Orange tried to do exactly what Summit is trying to do, and it was overturned. That case went to the appellate division, and the court there held that in order to be preempted, the municipal ordinance did not have to be the same as the state statute, but only had to be directed at substantially the same conduct. Here, the criminal conduct, which is the subject of the added section 316, is directly addressed in multiple state statutes, including, I'm going to name them, but I'm sure it's going to be, what? 2C 18-3, 2C 20-1.1, 2C 5-1, and 2C 18-2 and 3. Further, like here, West Orange believed that the ordinance was permissible because it did not require purposeful activity as the state statute does. But the court held that that did not resolve the facial conflict. Indeed, the appellate court citing the earlier case of St. Fy Felder stated that the inconsistency between the culpability standards in the statutes and the ordinance only underscored the point that the code in the local ordinance, dealing with the same criminal contact, it did so in a different manner, and consequently, the ordinance was preempted by state law, as this one is. I've read through both the, the recent ordinance. I understand the purpose for it. A lot of towns are dealing with the same issues of auto theft and house invasions, and I, I, I feel for the, the need to do something. Ultimately, however, the city of Summit does not revoke the section. The city could have to spend significant costs in litigation based, anything on the case, based on the section that you passed, and you're sure to lose. It's already settled law. That's all. Thank you for your time, and good night.
Oh, did you have any questions?
Yeah.
Are you cross-examining me?
I'm sorry. Did you want to ask any que, oh, I have the case. Can I, may I hand it up? Yeah.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
So that you can look at. And I am available, actually, your city clerk knows how to find me, I'm sure.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if they help me anywhere I can.
Thank you.
I am sorry, I know you're trying.
No, 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 thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Diego Hoick, NAGA Court. On February 6th, this council passed a resolution to influence legislation in Trenton, thus creating a precedent for addressing higher legislatures on topics that affect Summit residents. Lowering taxes for Summit residents requires the courage to speak truth to power to Democrats and Republicans alike who control higher legislatures. The so-called Trump tax cuts increased taxes for most Summit residents because the SALT deduction became limited to $10,000. On this double taxation of his constituents, Congressman Keen has been all talk and no action. I understand that tomorrow around noon, Congressman Keen is hosting a $1,000-per-plate fundraiser for Speaker Johnson in Springfield. As you did two weeks ago, I ask that tonight, you pass a resolution from the floor demanding that our congressional representative leverage any tool at his disposal to ensure that the U.S. House of Representatives increases the state and local tax deduction. After all, we have seen how the speaker buckles when the hard right plays hardball and threatens his speakership. In her book, Oath and Honor, Representative Liz Cheney reminds us that, quote, "All those who hold office must make a choice of how they will serve and what they will try to achieve for our country," end quote, page 283. A self-inflicted aura of rank partisanship will arise over the Republican majority of this body. Should our Republican congressman receive a free pass on the SALT deduction while the council adopts resolutions to chastise the Democratic-controlled state legislature? It's that simple. And in case, since it is tomorrow, I did take the liberty of writing a draft resolution in case you want to make copies and debate it, as the legislative process allows. I'm, I'm going to give you copies of it, and you can decide what to do.
Thank you. Thank you.
We could share. We could share.
Okay. Okay, is there any other public comment?
Good evening, once again. Still Claire Toth at 11 Sunset Drive. Last month, I requested that the Maple Street seasonal closure go to committee for, I think it's DAR. Thank you for taking that step, Councilwoman, Woman Hamlet. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about why it's so important to me and to focus on next steps. I've lived in Summit for 28 years now, so I'm a relative newcomer, but I know how lucky I am to have been able to raise my children in such a warm, loving community. The years we had as they were growing up, and we spending time at the library, at the Y and the connection, at our church and at school events, they were a precious time in our lives. Now that the young adults, living on their own, the time we spend together is a lot less concentrated than it used to be, but is no less special. So, when my kids come back for a visit, we still like to go out and do things in our community, but instead of storytime at the library, we might hear some live music on the street, go out to dinner in town. And during COVID, one of our favorite things to do was to have dinner out on Maple Street, under the string lights that I was proud to have had a part in purchasing when I was on the Board of SDI. And it was amazing way for us to connect with each other as a family. We were supporting our community, seeing old friends, having great meals under the stars, and then maybe even doing a little after-dinner shopping. We had live music, twinkling lights, good food, happy people. Summit became a real destination those summers. And I know that many friends feel the same way about that experience. I also know that many of our retail business owners did well during the Maple Street outdoor dining period, even better than they're doing now. They added nighttime hours, they gained a new set of customers, and that disappeared over last year for some of them. So, my question for you is, where are we with the Maple Street opportunity? I fear that there might be too much paralysis by analysis and not enough, let's figure out a way to make this happen. There are plenty of other towns who have outdoor dining, even us for a few great years. So, we know we can do this. And I have a suggestion. While the conversation in committee continues, why not send a letter to the state with our intention to close Maple Street this summer and get the ball rolling? Then, when you make a decision, and if it's the decision, I hope it is, you've already got the approval to move forward. So, let's be proactive, not reactive. Let's get this done for our community and our businesses. Here's your chance to bring Summit together on Maple Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, it's for anything not on the agenda?
Are the lights at Tatlock on the agenda?
No.
They're not.
Okay. You got me on that one.
My name is Kelly Icaveli. I live at 151 Colonial Road. I grew up here in town, and I have lived here with my husband and children for the last 20 years. I believe there is a discussion about proposing lights at Upper Tatlock, as well as investors. I have been involved with many sports teams in town, and we are very lucky that we have so many opportunities for our young people to participate in a variety of opportunities, but we are desperately in need of more fields, and this constraint has been something all sports teams have been dealing with for many years. Given we can't create new fields right now, the opportunity to extend the hours of use at investors would greatly help all sports teams. There are many occasions where sports practices and games have to be canceled because they were. were supposed to take place on grass fields. Having investors in Upper Tatlock, which are both turf, available, would keep our programs continuing even when grass fields are closed. It would also allow us to hold practices later in the day, which is also beneficial to working parents who are primarily the coaches for these youth programs. In addition, Investors Track is used by many individuals as a safe place to walk or run, and with many working parents having the opportunity to do these activities in the evening would be a great benefit. I do believe there are new lights that would light the field but not illuminate the entire neighborhood like back years ago, so it's strongly encouraged moving forward with this opportunity.
Thank you. Do you want to leave your statement with the clerk? Or email it? Okay. Thank you.
Monique Taylor, 167 Passaic Avenue, TAYLOR. So it's not perfect, but we are moving forward. According to counsel person Hamlet, the same person who cruelly wanted to table the vote to have Summit's participation in the continual care roundtable discussions, which affects some of Summit's most vulnerable. But this not-perfect ordinance, resident protection, which will largely affect innocent Black and Brown folks, was voted into law with the agreement two weeks ago from Council President Lisa Allen, that we would have conversations regarding the problematic language of said ordinance. That was two weeks ago, and we have yet to hear back about amending the language. So, Council President Allen, how long do we have to wait?
Well, we're having the hearing next week, so we're going to take our time to go through the language. We have, we'll have to set up a meeting with you. We're having the hearing next week.
Yeah.
We're past, are the, are the, oh, I'm sorry. So sorry. I was thinking of the other one. We'll be out, we'll be in touch. We, Council, where?
We have a meeting this Wednesday, don't we?
No, we don't.
No, no, no.
That's a different meeting. That has nothing to do with this ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So Ms. Taylor, we'll, we're going to be in touch.
Yes. We'll see in two weeks.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't make it seem like we haven't been in contact. Maybe not with you, but me and, we're talking about the ordinance, right?
The resident protection ordinance, yeah.
I mean, we have exchanged emails, we've spoken. I had breakfast with Reverend Vernon. I mean, we're, we're in conversations about it. It's not like--
What does that have to do with amending the language?
So, Ms. Taylor, if you can come to the microphone, because everybody else is listening. So this langu--
What does that have to do with amending the language? You having breakfast with Reverend Williams has nothing to do with amending the language, which you all said that we would do between last week and now, and no conversations have been had.
We said that we would be in touch to amend the language, not in two weeks. We, first, this is a very important ordinance. You're absolutely right. We want to make sure that the language is fine and good with the community, and so we will be in touch to set up a meeting.
When?
We'll be in touch, Ms. Taylor.
Reverend Vernon Williams, 116 Glenside Avenue. Councilman Boyer, yes, we did have breakfast. Great breakfast it was, great conversation, but was not over amending the language, you know, and so we look forward to hearing, you know, on, on how we can get together and talk about amending the language. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm mistaken. I thought we had a meeting scheduled on Wednesday.
Yeah, it's on, they have another. So we are going to your event tomorrow night. Thank you for the invitation. We will be there, so, thanks.
Hi. Dr. Carol Pak Tang, Summit, sorry, at 234 Summit Avenue. So at the last meeting, I'm going to share just some quotes, things that I heard, what I saw, and then what I felt. What I heard were the phrase "way overblown" in respect to many of the people who spoke at the podium last, two weeks ago. I also heard from Bob Palowski that I, quote, "I really don't see any downside." I also heard another resident say, "No one said racist." No one did say racist. No one did say that. I heard from folks like Reverend Vernon Williams concerns like, quote, "unintended consequences", quote, "not belonging," quote, "seen as an outsider." And another thing that I heard was Mr. Boyer say that he's lived in Summit all his life and nothing's happened to him. So pass, pass it and change it, quote. To me, passing an ordinance after so many people and every single person of color came to this microphone and said that this makes us feel less safe. And still, despite this, and despite acknowledging the fact that many of you said that the language is broad, that the language should be fixed, that you would contact us to fix this language, none of us has been contacted, as we just reviewed just now. I heard you all say that it is imperative that we do something about the safety. Yes, it absolutely is. I have three young children in this town. I live on Summit Avenue. I'm concerned about my safety, too. However, not at the cost of people in color in this town feeling less safe. I just looked at the demographics on census.gov. 68% of people in this town are white. That means the other 32% are non-white. And every leader, I forgot to mention this last week, I'm the founder of Summit AAPI, Asian American Pacific Islanders. As I said the other week, I started the festival that is now going to hopefully, you know, be passed and supported despite some concerns I heard about the budget coming up this year. But 32% of Summit residents identify as non-white. Every leader of color in this town spoke up. So what did that, so what did I see? That's what I saw, that every person of color in this town spoke up and you passed it anyway. Is this the governance that we're going to expect from this council? That you acknowledge, say, promise that you will speak with us into, within the two weeks' time, to make amendments as you acknowledge need to be made? However, we were not, none of us were contacted. I surely was not. And you can easily find any of us. We did hear you. You didn't hear us, but we did hear you. We heard that you will pass things despite concerns from the public. President Lisa Allen said that, quote, "It was unfortunate that we just had a meeting today with the Interfaith Council. It's been two weeks." You said that you have to rush passing something for our safety. However, you did not rush to speak to us. So I hope that within the next two weeks' time that meetings will be made, amendments will be drawn. Apparently, legally, we are put in danger, and financially, we are put in danger, that honestly, I would urge you to revoke, as the lawyer said, this ordinance, maybe try to fix the language, and then actually listen to the community and show us. Because the tone that was reflected and the things that were done two weeks ago sends a clear message to people of color in this town. It is clear that our voices are not being heard. Thank you.
Counselor President, I just had a quick, quick comment. Quick question after you're done. So, safety has been top of mind in this community. And unfortunately, we are responding to the state's inability to address how concerned people feel around safety in their own homes. And the municipalities, as you heard from Ms. Lazar, are put into this position. She understands why we are doing this, because we're not the only town. There are other towns that have done it. And it was not unfortunate that I spoke with the Anti-Racism Committee. What I was saying was that it was unfortunate that we only had met the day before. So it was my honor to meet with you guys. And to be clear, I apologize that it's been two weeks. It wasn't my intention not to meet with you, it just has been two weeks. So I didn't, if I said I was going to meet with you within two weeks, that, I apologize if that's, that I misled you. So we do intend to be in touch. I take this very, very seriously, because there are lots of sides to this, and it means something to me to make sure that we make the right decision. And when we sit down, I don't want to rush. I don't want to feel like, oh, we're just going to do this to make you feel better and make, you know, check the box. I want to sit down with you when you know that we have the time to think about it and that we can really work through what your concerns are, what our community's concerns are that are afraid in their homes, and make the best possible decision. That really, that's what it means to me. We're all in a really precarious spot, and I want you to feel welcome at all times. There's, this, this chamber is for everybody. It is not for one type of person or another. So I apologize that I put an un, you know, unrealistic expectation in everybody's mind that it was only two weeks. That was not my intention. I am going to go see my son this week for the first time in, at college, so you will hear from me next week. And I promise you, you have my word, that we are going to do this right and that we will be in touch. And I can't wait to see you tomorrow night. And by the way, Reverend Williams, I have a very early morning on Thursday, so I might leave little hair early. So I hope that you accept that apology for the misunderstanding, and we will take the right time, okay? Okay. Yep, and then, and then Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen. I think several things have happened here, and listening very carefully. I think that the first thing that has, has happened is that oftentimes, I think in your honest assessment of, of conditions in the city and your intentions to do the right thing by everyone, you often fail to consult or talk with persons who may have more knowledge about something that you are intending to introduce than if you had, you may have held it longer or not introduced it at all. I think that I learned this evening from the attorney Lazar that many other municipalities had passed this similar type ordinance, and it was rejected. I mean, you know, it's illegal or what have you. I think that's what she said. Correct me if I'm wrong. If you had known that in advance, I am certain based upon your intelligence, you would not have gone forward with it. Therefore, that means that you did not know it. Having heard that, it's imperative that you do one thing. If it's illegal, and it's been declared illegal by the court system, New Jersey courts, that you revoke it, and because all of us are concerned about safety, and if this ordinance is not going to do anything standalone to promote more concern about safety, and it's been declared illegal, it should be revoked. Second thing is that oftentimes, the Interfaith Council or the Anti-Racism Committee are consulted to do damage control after something has been passed. I would suggest that you, you know, proactively talk with us in advance, wave in advance to let us know what you're planning to do so that we can give our input in terms of what our opinion is, how it will affect not only persons of color, because, you know, I'm a person of color, but I'm the most, the tallest and the most handsome man in this room. And that should, you know, we should, you should do things proactively, because I respect your trying to do the right thing for Summit. I really do. I never question that. But oftentimes, once you get in a position, and as a pastor, I know that, you, you can be lulled to sleep thinking that you have arrived to a position of power and you know what is best, you know, like the TV series sometime, some years ago, Father Knows Best. Sometimes Father Don't Know Best, Mother Knows Best, whoever. So I just think that based upon what the attorney said this evening, and I heard for the first time, that this is something that could have been thought out more, longer, and didn't have to be introduced. And if it's illegal now, and you have, you know, you know that, revoke it, and we're still going to strive with the police and everything to make Summit the safest place that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Just-- Reverend Harold, Jesse, we did consult with our lawyers and the chief, so I just, I want to put it out there that I know that Ms. Lazar came and said what she said, but it is important to note that we definitely did not do it in a vacuum, but I appreciate what you're saying.
They may not know either.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. I have a couple things. I have an announcement. I work for the Kindersmile Foundation. We provide free oral health care for probably all throughout the state of New Jersey for children and adults now in Trenton, but we partner with Grace's Pantry, and this Thursday, we have an outreach. We usually are with them once a month, but it is Give Kids a Smile Day, actually, Give Kids a Smile Month, but we're doing a Give Kids a Smile Day on Thursday. So I just want to make an announcement to any children who are uninsured or low income or need a dental checkup. We're going to be at the Summit Community Center on Thursday, and we will be there from two times, so 11 to 1:00 and 4 to 7:00. So if anybody in Summit, or even, you know, if they're within the surrounding community, but if they're really Grace's family and they need a checkup for a child under the age of 18, they can come to 100 Morris Avenue. That's at the Summit Community Center. We'll be there. And I'm also collecting donations, so anybody who has toothbrushes, toothpaste, floss, alcohol-free mouthwash, there's a donation bin right at the community center. So please spread the word, because I'd like to provide all oral hygiene products for Grace's family for a whole year, so I'm trying to do that collection and keep going. And then if you know anybody who needs oral health care after tomorrow, what's it, after Thursday, then you can contact Ms. Allen or even Mayor Fagan. They can reach me, and then you can come to the Bloomfield office. That's where Kindersmile is. Or even the Trenton office, we see adults. So if you know any adult who's low income or who needs help, they can come. So Interfaith Council, you guys can reach me. They can come down to Trenton and they can seek help with Kindersmile. We just don't see adults at the Bloomfield office, but they can get free dental health ages 0 to 13. They can get a free dental exam, free dental cleaning, fluoride, and x-rays as well. So that's just one quick announcement. The other thing, I have known Tony Ellis since we were kids. We grew up together. And so I just want to say, Mr. Vartan, you stole his thunder. He was here to receive an award, and he had like five minutes, and to speak about last week's ordinance, you could have spoken later today. But, you know, like, that was like a great moment for him, and I just want everyone to understand, he was here to speak about his book. And that was, that book was a memoir of some really personal stuff. Okay, we grew up together, we graduated together. He was, he's a great friend. I was the only one here for him tonight. So I just want you to understand, we got to keep politics out of politics and sometimes just appreciate the people who are here for who they are. And I think we're getting involved in the right and the left all the time here. And the lady who spoke, the attorney, as she's leaving, she's talking to people that she knows in the audience. So like, when we're introducing ordinances and we're doing stuff to protect the public and we're bringing people to speak on behalf of whoever, it's getting a little complicated here. And I think we all need to remember that, okay? Because as I'm sitting down there and watching and people are speaking and they're getting angry, we forget the Republicans and the Democrats, we're here to help the people at Summit. That's it, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Reverend Rod Williams, 116 Gunside Avenue, Fountain Baptist Church. It's always interesting to hear that matters that are considered life or death are a partisan issue. That in essence, we certainly appreciated what the brother who wrote the book had to say, and we look forward to working with you on correcting language because Martin Luther King did say, "The time is always right to do what's right." And so the main thing that I, like I said, so we do look forward to working with you, but I do have a problem, Father Boyer, when you seem to go out of your way when you're discussing the issue around affordable housing to assuage the idea that as, as was noted in the resolution about how much redlining, how much racism has gone on in the practice of housing. But you made two attempts to, to effectively assure folks that there would be no thought of reversing any of those wrongs, that it had to be sincerely and purely a socioeconomic issue. And so I repeat to you what Dr. King said, "The time is always right to do what is right." And if what is right means addressing some of those wrongs, then don't take the time to try to propagate more of the same. Thank you.
I don't even understand that. So, no, no, wait, wait, wait a second. Wait, one, one second. The, the reason why I said what I said was because oftentimes when we think of affordable housing and one of the residents came up. And it's, it's, it's prompted as a race issue, right? Like, we need more diversity, redlining, things that happened in the past and everything. I wanted to make the point that, you know, if, that affordable housing and the wrongs that were perpetrated against black people are two separate things. Because, just because you have affordable housing does not mean that we're now going to have diversity with black people that move to Summit. And I think those two things get conflated. And I just wanted to point that out because, you know, we're talking about income disparities, but we're not talking about having black people given opportunities in general specifically to move to Summit. So I just want to point out the conflation there. That, that's, that's the only thing that I was doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boyer. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, I just have a question for Mr. Rogers. There was a comment by one of the, a lady that came up here before about canceling the AAPI parade due to budgets. Do you have any plans on taking any of the parades or festivities or days of, out of the budget because we don't have the budget for these things? I, I don't know.
No, that's not our plan in the budget discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Three, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Miniger.
Was there a changeover in the funding of the, the events this year? Was it a different funding method? And is that method guaranteed, the grant that we're trying to get? Is it like 100% guaranteed?
I'm sorry, which, which specific event are you referring to?
These city events in general.
Is there any change in the funding? Most of that, those events come out of DCP. Some of those are funded by trust monies. But we've never had a discussion about changing any event funding.
Well, I think we're applying for another grant this year.
Yeah, we, we apply for grants all the time.
And it was because one, another one, I think, has expired.
Okay.
Okay. I just made that clear.
Is this something Councilmember Miniger, you've been talking about in your committee that we have to cancel? I, I wasn't sure, wasn't aware of that.
Through you, Council President?
Yes.
Uh, no, we're applying for a new grant because the other one is, is expiring.
For all programs or just certain programs?
Many, including city events.
I, I would actually ask-
Through you, Council President, I was wondering if maybe we could bring up Mark?
Or, or yeah, or David or?
I just wasn't aware of this, so it's a really big deal. I just want to make sure that-
I know, I agree. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and by no means has there been any discussion about canceling these events by, in any conversations. So that should be very clear.
Thank you.
I think the distinction is that we're losing money from Citizens Bank. That money's been cut drastically. They've been sponsoring the concerts for, geez, at least 12, 14 years. And BMS, that funding is also debatable whether they're going to continue to support the Fourth of July because they're shifting their mission. In any conversation that I have had with any planning group for any event, I have said, "This year fundraising is paramount. Whatever we do at any event is going to depend on the money that we can raise." So any comment that has been made has been directed towards that. To conflate it as canceling the events is totally wrong and inaccurate. And to mention the grant, it's not that it was canceled. It's not that we didn't reapply. The Summit Foundation accepts one grant per cycle. This year, we submitted that for Maybe Playground. So that grant was submitted for Maybe Playground, which was a much larger project than the events in the past. We do plan on securing any funds that we can get for the events because as Administrator Rogers mentioned, it does all come from the trust fund or sponsorships. There's actually historically, and this is important to note, no city budget money ever in the past, as long as I've been here, for events. There is no budget line for events. There has never been in my time, so there's no budget money to take away.
Right. Thank you for the clarification because you usually help raise those sponsorships, correct? I, I mean, you've done a great job every year.
That's been a huge part of my job. When I first started, that was one of my sole responsibilities.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come off your floor. Because you guys are talking around something that you said.
Um, okay. Is there any other comments from, this is actually public comment. So is there any more comments? Okay. All right. Because we, there, Helena, right? Show of hands, who's here for the lacrosse? I just need to know because there are people here for the lacrosse wall. I want to be mindful of time. Okay. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Helena Levis, 24 Plain Street. I'm talking about the resolution that was passed two weeks ago. And let's say everybody meant well and I'm all for public safety and everything like that. But if, if it goes south, rest assured that the persons involved will probably be people of color. That's just the way it is. And it's very easy for things to go south. I've lived with, my partner for 30 years is African-American. He's black. Just a month ago, we were stopped in New York because he had his phone in his hand. And we happened to stop at a light, which was right in front of a police station. So there were several policemen out there. And it was, they came to the window, you have your phone on. So they asked for his driver's license, all of that. But he gave him a PBA card that he got from his cousin. And usually if you give a PBA card, if it's not a big offense, they just let you go. And while they're looking at the PBA card and his license, he starts schmoozing a little bit, saying, "Oh, you know, I, I took the test, um, was it for Transit Authority or Police, whatever? Took the test many years ago." And he said if he was smart, you know, he could have been, you know, already a policeman, blah, blah, blah. They misheard him and for some reason, the policeman thought he said that he was on the job, not his cousin was on the job. So now it's, "Get out of the car." "Why get out of the car?" Now it's, "You're impersonating an officer." And I'm like, "You misheard him." And of course, he looks at me because one more time, he doesn't want the white woman trying to get him out of trouble. I mean, it's a real big problem. And they took him into the police station. And why is he here? And the desk sergeant was, "You brought him in because he was on his phone." And that was it. He was brought into the police station, given a desk warrant that he had to come back and pay because he was on his phone. I don't think anybody else here in this room has ever been brought into a police station because you were on your cellphone and he wasn't even on it. It was on, in his hand. But that doesn't make any difference. So I went into the police station, I said, "He never said he was an officer." And it was, okay, because of my color, it was, oh, all right, but they already, you know, put his name down, everything, so he has to get a bench bar. So it's a fine line sometimes that you have to walk to make sure that, you know, the person you're with is not emasculated. You know, the white woman coming to the defense of the black man, I'm believed, he's not. And we try to keep a sense of humor about it. You know, we always say, "When the revolution comes, I'll be the first to go." But, um-
I'm sorry about you. I'm sorry that happened. I'm sorry.
Okay. But what happens is, let's not call it racism. Let's call it prejudice. That sounds a little better. It's easier for people to take. And a man came up and said, how insulted he was that people would think that anybody here is racist or prejudiced. Meanwhile, there have been many times people have come to my house, passed by my husband and come to me and say, "Uh, is the owner of the house home?" "Uh, yeah, you just passed him." And that has happened on many occasions. So it's not that we're racist, but in, in living in Summit, the majority of people are white, the majority of homeowners are white, and it's just you've been conditioned to feel this way and think this way. And, you know, there are many things that we do that we don't recognize that are prejudice. You know, a couple of black men pass you by, you close your, you lock your car door. You know, you hold your purse a little closer. You know, all these things, they all add up to, um, a lifetime of being conditioned, of being a prejudiced person.
Thank you, Helena. Thank you for sharing your story.
Oh, and the other thing is-
Yeah. I'm sorry, we have to wrap up.
Okay.
Sorry.
You were talking about in the resolution, uh, punishment. And if people are punished, if there are consequences, but you have to catch them first.
Right. Thank you. That's an important point of, yeah. That's an actually important point. Okay. I am, I'm going to make an announcement and I just want to make sure, Clerk Liz Coteez, that you're okay with this. So once we wrap up public comment, when we get to resolutions, I am going to bump up the community programs and parking services resolutions first because I think that's what everybody's here for. So Clerk Liz Coteez, is that going to be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So any more comments for public comment? Please, I'm asking you, name, address, and three minutes.
Peter Sibello, 11 Greenfield Avenue in Summit. Resident for 75 years in the same house. Regarding the resolution that was passed, lawyer says it's invalid or illegal. My, my suggestion is to avoid that resolution now before we get into a court and have to pay, the taxpayers end up paying for lawsuits. Kill it now, be done with it.
Thank you.
And then readdress it.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President, I have a quick question.
Sure. Okay. Show of hands, is there anyone after Mr. Bassman that needs public comment? I just want to make sure I know. Okay, Henry, you're the last one.
I guess I'm the wrap-up, huh?
Yes, you are. You're the final show, the final act.
My name's Henry Bassman. I live at 18 Hartley Road in Summit. I moved here in 1974. In 10 days, I will have lived here for 10, for 50 years. When I moved into my neighborhood, near Tatlock Field, Canoe Brook Parkway and Hartley Road, it was a quiet, middle-class neighborhood, mostly three and four-bedroom homes, modest homes. Last 10 years or so, things have changed. A lot of those homes have been torn down and replaced by homes that were two, three, four times their cost. In 1974, when I moved here, Howie Anderson was still at the high school. At Tatlock, we had six football games, Summit relays, and the high school graduation. In 2003, 2004, there was a move to turf Tatlock Field, the lower, and put lights on the lower field and build the upper field for the lacrosse group. Washington Area Association was formed because people became alarmed. After lots of discussion and many meetings with folks from all over the affected area, an agreement was made that, that lights would not be installed on Tatlock Field. Since then, neighborhood residents have accommodated the change brought about by the turf field. Use of both fields has increased significantly. Games most Saturdays and Sundays in good weather. There's blaring, loudspeakers, traffic, parking in controlled intersections, no pushback from the nearby neighbors. Anecdotal, personally, I like to take a nap on Saturday afternoons because I do my shift at Vets for Warriors and I work late into the night. It's hard to sleep on game days, even though I have double-pane glass on my windows because of the noise from the loudspeakers, the traffic and all the attendant business. I haven't complained. I've thought about it, but I haven't done it. Friday night lights were initiated, nobody complained. Practice lights were installed on Upper Tatlock Field, nobody complained. Now, the installation of game lights with an attendant increase in events will, will create a hardship for everybody who lives in that area. And I'm talking about people in Ward One, Districts Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven. The process, there are, excuse me, the proposal for $1.6 million for lights is incomplete. No study of costs, impact on quality of life, has been conducted. The process for reaching a decision has been backward. $1.6 million is being asked for based on a rough estimate more than a year old. No discussion with affected neighbors was made, no research of ongoing costs for maintenance, operation, and repair, no traffic impact studies or noise studies, no anticipation that Tatlock lights might motivate oratory or can place schools or the golf course to be lighted, all of which are in our neighborhood. There's been no discussion about whether it's appropriate for school-aged children to be up with athletic activities until 10 o'clock at night on school nights. No usage guidelines are in place. For example, will Summit teams only or people from out of town be allowed to use the fields? And if there are regulations made to that extent, how will they be enforced? If a private-public partnership were created, as some have suggested, what would be their responsibility? Will they be a one-time payer and then the city would take over the maintenance and the repairs and the ongoing expenses? Or would the public-private partnership take that on in perpetuity? And if they forfeit it, what would we do about it?
Mr. Bassman?
All of these unknowns-
I'm just going to have you-
-need to become known before money is allocated for this project. And there is no way that it can be decided by the time this year's capital budget is approved. You don't ask for money and then ask, and then decide how to spend it. You don't appropriate money and then make a plan on how you're going to spend it. My, my final, my final thought-
Okay.
The $1.6 million request ought to be removed from the capital expense budget. Until this matter has been fully studied and agreements have been made between the city, the smarts organization- city, the smarts organizations, and the residents in the neighborhood, that's the only fair and proper process that this council should follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to give your statement to Clerk Lee Cattis? Uh, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Sure.
Uh, final thoughts?
I believe we have, I believe we have.
I, I want to make one, one thing very clear. Uh, Mr. Bassman, thank you for your comments, and obviously some very good points. I want to make one thing very clear here tonight. Last year, I was in charge of that committee. The year before that, it was this guy in charge of that committee. The year before that, it was none of these people up here. They are all inheriting this conversation, and I want to be very clear around that. There will be studies, there will be public engagement, but the last council and the last committee chairs were responsible for seeing this through. The studies, the public engagement, and our director and our assistant director have done a wonderful job. We've made it very clear that we are gonna continue to engage the community. That's clear. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Did you want to come have, for public comment? Okay. Not for the Tatlock wall, right?
No.
Public comment, okay. Okay, go ahead.
I just, Joe Goransky, 85 Oak Ridge Avenue in Summit. I just figured I'd speak. I think you raised a lot of very valid questions, um, and I'm sure, you know, they're gonna be explored. But I would just say, I'd love them to be explored because I think having the lights would be great. I don't want to address what Ms. Archivelli talked about in terms of practice fields because I think they're needed. I agree with that 100%. I also like Summit having more control of its own destiny because I know other fields we use are controlled by other towns, so I'm very much in favor of this. But one thing I wanted to say was sort of a point that the council president raised earlier, and this is a community, and we, we have to be concerned about the whole community. So these issues have to be addressed. I do think there's been some great advancements in lighting, from what I understand, to hopefully minimize that aspect. Obviously, the hours of operation, there's lots of things to consider, and I'm sure you guys will do all that. But I wanted to mention, I guess just an emotional piece for me, is, is the Friday Night Lights piece. Like, I would just like to see, I, you know, in, in this town, one of the things that drew us to this town, my wife and I, was the schools, the sports programs. They're well-known, and I think it's a huge draw, even though one, one person who moved to Summit in the past year and change to be a part of the football program from another nearby town because of how good our football program is, and they wanted to be here. And I think that the sense, what you were talking about earlier, and just like walking around and, you know, our sense of community, I see that all the time with all the sports. I've gone to wrestling matches, I've gone to basketball games. My kids don't play either of those sports. Friends of mine have come to their football games, their baseball games, and I, and I love that. And Friday Night Lights, I'd love to see, I have one kid who's still playing football, sophomore in high school, and I'd love him to get a chance to play Friday Night Lights in Summit, not for other towns that we play Friday Night Lights in, not the two, um, I went to two Friday Night Lights in Maryland this year, two different towns in Maryland. I went to Lacrosse Friday Night Lights at Don Bosco. I think it's, I, I can't even believe we don't have it, to be honest with you. I would love to see the kids be able to play. I'm not saying, I understand, it has to be balanced, it can't be every night, you know, there have, there have to be limitations, we have to recognize the community. But I think, I, I just can't believe, like I said, the town I grew up in, that's one of the teams we played this year, Colonia, Raway, these all have Friday Night Lights. So I would love my kid to have an opportunity to play on his home field at least once when he's in high school. So that's all, just in support of it. And again, I agree that there are a lot that needs to be done before it could be a reality, but I'd love the council to, you know, move forward and analyze this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel President, do, do you mind if I, I make a comment? Because I think this is probably, I wrote some comments down that I think would address a lot of issues and questions that the rest of the people may have.
Yep, um, you, well, you already came up. For, for public comment. Councilwoman Smallwood first, and then I'll have you. Are you speaking on something else?
No, I just want to, uh, I just heard something that Councilwoman Hamlet said, and I think that there is a clarification that needs to be made.
Okay, um, Diego, I'm gonna go to Councilman Smallwood first.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussions in social media regarding lights at Tatlock Field. Specifically, I've heard that council has already decided to put up lights at Tatlock. The lights will be on until 10:00 PM, seven days a week, 365 days a year. There'll be Friday Night Lights every week. The city tax dollars will fund the project to the tune of $1.6 million. This is not quite accurate, and let me explain. On December 13th, 2023, the city had its annual preliminary budget presentation. This meeting was open to the public, as in this case, every year, each city department presents its wish list of items and requests for funding for the fiscal year July 21, 2024 through June 20th, 2025. The list of the Department of Community Programs included lights for upper and lower Tatlock. As in this case, with many items in the preliminary budget, lights for Tatlock may not be included in the actual budget for this coming fiscal year unless it is approved. Why is it, why is it in the preliminary budget? Because after years of preparation, the Department of Community Programs created a Tatlock Lighting Subcommittee in 2018. That has been working on this, on this project for over five years. The DCP was finally ready for these next steps. Why it may not be included in the actual budget for the coming year? Because A, there is much work to be done before we can make decisions as to whether to put up lights. B, we hope to fund any project, at least in part, outside of the city budget, and there is much work to be done before we are able to fully vet funding options. Before I go to four, before I go to the four-step process, which you can all find in the FAQs posted by the Department of Community Programs Facebook page, I want to give a little more background on the Tatlock Lighting Subcommittee. The purpose of the Subcommittee is to implement a focused approach to help the city obtain input from key stakeholders within the community, the city staff, and to help drive consensus and prioritization to help generate recommendations, to identify funding methods, sources, as well as obtain possible sponsorship for this project. And this council will see to it that the Subcommittee fulfills its mission of finding the solution best for the community, driven by community input. What we have learned from the Broad Street West Project is that council needs to have an inclusive approach that is transparent, gathers valuable input, to help us from, frame opportunities, and not hatch potential solutions in a vacuum. Again, our approach is to be transparent and inclusive. To that extent that this project requires city funding, I believe we can establish a plan that aligns with the city budget process, aligns with upcoming debt to be retired, and reflects the most pressing recreation facility needs within Summit. As for the four steps we have taken, uh, as for the four steps have tasked by the Subcommittee. First, we meet with industry professionals, engineers, and other development, and other develop, and others to develop a general plan, which has been completed. Second, once a general plan is developed, present it to key stakeholders for feedback, which is currently in progress. Two weeks ago, we held a small meeting with seven residents from Butler Parkway, Aubrey, and Lewis. That was the first step. We are just at, we are just at the second step. There's four steps to this process. We're currently at number two. Third, based on the feedback that we received in the second step of engaging with stakeholders, the third step is edit those plans based on the feedback received from key stakeholders and present revised plans to the larger community for additional feedback. We're not there yet. Fourth, further refine plans and present to the council for approval. Again, we are not there yet. We are currently in the second step of this four-step process. As I mentioned in the meeting that I had with a small group of residents two weeks ago, it was myself, Mark Ozerowski, David Guida, two members from the Lighting Subcommittee, and the mayor. At the end of the meeting, I promised them that this is the first of many meetings to come. Again, we are at the second step process. We have not decided whether we're gonna put lights on there or not. This is a continuation of a committee that was, that began in 2018, that not only included myself as of this year, a whole month and a half into it, but it included my predecessor, Councilman Andy Mitiger, Councilman Delia Hamlet, and Councilman Danny O'Sullivan. So this is not something that has just been conjured together in the last month and a half or since December. This has been a process for five years, and we will continue to hold small community meetings. And what I tried to do is start with the intimate neighborhood that is surrounding Tatlock. And then bring it out to the third process, again, let me repeat, edit plans based on feedback received from the key stakeholders in the neighborhood, and present a revised plan to the larger community for additional feedback. I've tried to be as extremely transparent about this as much as possible. I don't know how much I could have done any further. So let me repeat, this is the second step of the step-four-step process. So I hope that answers some of your questions, and I will continue to hold meetings over the next several weeks. And I believe Mayor Fagan mentioned that we're going to have a larger community engagement about an entire recreational, where they included Tatlock Lights as well as fields and playgrounds, and sometime in, I believe, in early April. So I hope that answers a lot of your questions regarding Tatlock Lights.
Thank you, been Councilwoman Smallwood. Mayor, do you, do you want to add anything else?
No, I just want to make sure that people, um, continue to engage, and obviously, we want to hear feedback, and, and please do, um, keep an eye out for the date for the playgrounds and parks and rec, uh, conversation in April, hopefully in April. That's the plan at the moment.
Excellent, okay.
Can I just say something really quickly?
Yes, and I just want to tell Diego something. I am not gonna take, um, under the advisement of the clerk, we don't do two times up, um, at the lectern in public comment, so email your comments, and if you want, in two weeks, come back, but.
Only because it's in response to a comment made by the councilperson, you should probably just email your concerns so that they can, she can respond.
I will remind you the number of times that Ms. Agnon or Mr. Magoi spoke multiple times.
No, Ms. Agnon did not speak twice during public comment.
Not today.
They did not.
I will, I will just remind you that.
I would appreciate you respecting that decision. Thank you.
Councilman Barton.
Sure. So I, Kevin, I thought that was excellent, excellent explanation. Thank you for that. I think it's extremely helpful. I just want to point out, I think the issue is, some people are hearing very clearly, right, we're on step two of the four-step process. Other people have been led to believe, I don't know why, but they have been led to believe, right, these are happening. Lights are happening, they're coming, we're gonna have them by the fall, right? So, so it, it's either that there's a misconception out there, or people in the city are speaking out of both sides of their mouth, and that's a problem that we need to, that we need to address, right? So, so the community does, I agree with you, need to have a very clear sense of what this process is gonna look like, and I just want to make this suggestion because, having sat here a while now, I have a relatively good sense of what is likely to become controversial, right? So, so what, I, as the chair of the Administrative Policies and Community Relations Committee, I would love to have been informed that we had an FAQ and a whole explainer that was ready to go, right? And I think that we could have, uh, coordinated a little bit better on, on rolling that out. And then the third thing that I would suggest is, if we're planning more things, if we're planning more meetings, if we're planning more engagement, if we have a potential public-private partnership lined up, you know, we need to, we need to get ourselves a plan as to how we're gonna discuss these things, because obviously, this is a topic that is extremely important to people. So that's, that's all I want to say about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitiger.
Counsel President.
Uh, Barton, not Mitiger, sorry.
Go ahead.
Listen, well, obviously, being the council liaison to the Department of Community Programs, I, if I'm speaking out of, out of sight, both sides of my mouth, I lay it out.
No, I didn't say that.
I lay it out very clearly what the plan is.
Yeah.
Okay? And the potential of having a partner, public-private, a private-public partnership is the fact that it would reduce the amount of taxpayer dollars allocated to this if council decides to do this. So there has been no discussions in terms of going to private donations and asking for private donations. This is a plan, we're not even there yet. We are at the step where we are taking community engagement, and that's the reason why I set up a meeting with local residents to meet with them, to get their input, to find out what their concerns are. And I also mentioned at the meeting that, at one point, when we come to that decision, whether it's for lights or whether we approve lights or not approve lights, there is going to be a group of people who are absolutely against lighting, and there are gonna be a group of people who are absolutely for lighting. So whatever decision that we end up making here on council, there's going to be a group of people who are unhappy about one thing or the other. My goal here is to meet with the residents, specifically those that I wanted to start with, those are specifically around Tatlock Field, to find out what, what kind of consensus could we come to that would be acceptable? Is it the lights itself? Is it parking? Is it, uh, traffic? Is it the safety, the lighting around Butler Parkway itself? I'm trying to gather that information because ultimately, it would be my committee to bring it to council for a vote. And I promised them that I would not bring this to council for a vote until we got a community consensus on something that we could all, uh, we're both, both groups are gonna have to agree on something, right? And whether we approve it or not, we're trying to engage the community at a smaller, smaller level, get that input, and then bring it to a larger community.
I think that makes sense. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. Michelle.
Michelle Kalmenson, 67 Butler Parkway. I'm sorry, I don't have a written statement because I didn't actually plan to address this tonight. Um, I wanted to say a few things. One, we fully, fully support annual Friday Night Lights. We would love to have that back. We would, we would love that on Butler Parkway. Secondly, with, I mean, Councilman Smallwood is saying we're on the second step, and the frustration for the people who live in Tatlock neighborhood is, how do you think we feel when you say we're only on the second step? But we get booster meeting minute notes where we see the athletic director saying, "Go to the meetings when it comes up at council. It's not a 0% chance for 2024. Strong likelihood they will be in by 2025." And how do you think we feel to see that when no one's even talked to us? And I don't know if you know that he's saying that, but it's so upsetting for us to feel like the sports community knows what's happening in our neighborhood more than we do. Thank you.
That's fair. Thank you.
Michelle, I, um, I, I did not know that, so thank you for pointing that out. I really appreciate that. You know, I, I didn't know what was put out into that flyer, um, so thank you for pointing that out. Now, I'll certainly speak to Athletic Director Healy about that as well.
Mayor?
May I? If you have those minutes, I'd love to see them. If you could send them my way, I'd be curious because I didn't hear that either. Thank you.
Julie? Yeah.
Sorry, I just need to, my mind's driven broader. To Sunset Drive in Summit, I just want to address the last person that spoke. I'm the president of the boosters, so I know what's been discussed at the minute, in the meetings, and there's never been anything in the minutes reflecting that, that Athletic Director Healy has said that this is a definite go ahead, and we haven't really even spoken about it at any of the booster meetings. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Hi, Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I also was not planning on speaking, um, but yes, it was definitely in the booster meeting minutes that came out from the January meeting where Mr. Healy said that there would be, there wasn't a 0% likelihood for 2024, most likely by 2025. So when not, I think he said, not if, when it goes to council, come and show your support. So that, that was direct quotes from the booster meeting minutes. And, um, I mean, all my kids play sports too, very supportive of the boosters, um, and I think since conflate is the word of the meeting, I think it's been conflated between Friday Night Lights and the stadium, permanent stadium lighting, especially because there is someone who has a sign saying Summit Strong Friday Night Lights Like the Stadium. And we on Butler Parkway are not opposed to Friday Night Lights. We always loved that event. But it is perfectly feasible, as you all. But it is perfectly feasible, as you all say with technology coming a long way with lights, to do Friday night lights and give our football team the experience of playing under the lights at home with temporary lighting. And Councilman Smallwood, you were saying how we were throwing out 10:00 PM, seven nights a week, 365 days a year. That is directly from Mr. Ozarowski and our meeting. And the only reason that meeting came about was because a group of concerned citizens started asking questions, which Mr. Ozarowski referred to us, to another neighbor, as a rumor mill, which we didn't appreciate when we were just trying to gather information. So that is the only reason why we are even at, included in step two. You guys may admit at step two, having meetings with important stakeholders, but it wasn't the neighbors or the people that would be impacted every day by this. So we just asked for a little courtesy and respect and understand that you guys would bring your kids to the field. I get to go home to your nice dark neighborhoods. And we would be stuck with heavily trafficked, whistleblowing, car doors slamming, you know, people parked on our street at night that we don't know whose car they are. And we'd be stuck with that every night. And I have three bedrooms that face the front of the house, that face the field, that overlook it. Perfect view of it. I don't want a light bomb across the street. And when I had asked about the cumulative effect of lighting, the upper field, the lower field, the tennis courts, the walkways, the new parking lot lighting, I was told that that wasn't even considered. So just, those are my comments. Sorry, I don't have anything written. I was not planning on getting up today, so thank you so much.
Thank you. The irony of this conversation is we spent, I've almost spent a year and a half on this dais listening to conversations about development, traffic, lights, noise pollution. So I think it's, it's an interesting conversation when we talk about developing this year and making our community denser and higher population. These are all things that we have to think about, how you balance that out with the quality of life. So just wanted to put that out there.
Nobody's voice was silent.
Diego. Okay. Okay, so if anyone is listening and wants to come and talk about community programs and parking services resolutions, you have five minutes to get here because we are going to move on to ordinances for introduction. And then we are going to bump up the community programs and parking services resolutions, so. Give me one second. Moving on to introduction, okay. Is anybody leaving? So I just want to give it a minute.
So. About the 12 folks, the unhoused folks, I think Councilman Smallwood. I, I am working with one of those families, so who should I call in regards to that?
She can send an email to me and I will.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, and I, obviously, we want to keep that confidential, so we.
So Council President, you're not, you're not doing law and labor next?
Um, is, we are, we're going to do the ordinances for introduction first. And then when we get to resolutions, I'm bumping up the community programs and parking services first. We're going to go through all of them. I just wanted to, because I know there are people here to talk about the wall, the gazebo wall at Tatlock. I want to be mindful of everybody's time. Okay, okay, so we're going to do ordinances first. Give me one second. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
ID number 11037, an ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration, Section 2-15, Department of Police of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new section, 2-15.15, entitled Custodian of Records.
Councilman Pulaski.
So this resolution, or I'm sorry, this ordinance amends and supplements Chapter Two Administration of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new section entitled Custodian of Records, which will establish a record custodian for police department records. The main impetus for this is Oprah requests. And there are many Open Records Act requests for police department records. Police did their own, handled their own Oprah requests and productions until 2019. And to put it short, we're racking up a lot of legal fees. Last year, we had 1,400 Oprah requests, which cost $76,000 in legal fees, not to mention all the time that the city clerk had, had to spend on it. So this resolution will cut down on the time the city clerk's office needs to, needs to spend on these requests. It will cut down on the legal fees. And it will put the production of police records in the hands of those best qualified to analyze and produce police records.
Okay.
I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Went to the restroom. Okay, okay, so the hearing date is going to be on March 5th. Are there any council comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
No, no, no.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet? Ms. Hamlet?
Oh.
You have to wait for Kevin to come back.
Councilman Smallwood, please. Little pep in your step. Just bring him up to speed. We are voting on Law and Labor, Ordinance 1104. The Oprah.
Yes.
Yes. 110, oh, sorry. We're taking a vote now.
Do you need a second?
You missed your opportunity.
Councilman Boyer. You missed the second. We just want your vote.
Aye.
If you want his vote, yes.
No, I didn't get to him yet. I'm still, I'm still running.
Sorry.
Can I start over?
Yes.
Okay, are there any council member comments? No? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay, the hearing will be on March 5th. Madam Clerk, please read the second ordinance.
ID number 11054, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter Two Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, subsection 2-43.3, Appointment of Members and Term.
Okay, Councilman Pulaski.
So this, the purpose of this ordinance is to amend Chapter Two Administration, Section, Section 43 of the Code entitled Rent Commission to add two alternate members to the rent commission. The rent commission is one of many committees that we have in Summit. It was established by ordinance in 1979. And the rent commission hears complaints in landlord-tenant relationships, educates landlords and tenants about laws affecting them, and recommends methods of settling disputes suggesting and suggests appropriate action to council. Currently, there are five seats. And it would require a, there are five, there are five full members who vote on matters. We've had issues with quorum in, in the recent past. If you lose a couple of members, you can't do the business of that, of the rent commission on a given night. So what we are proposing here is to add two alternate positions so that when full members cannot make it, alternates can, can sub in and vote, and they can get their business done. This is done in other, other town committees as well and boards. So I move to introduce this ordinance.
Councilman Smallwood.
I second.
Okay, are there any council comments? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. All right, thank you. The hearing will be on March 5th. Okay, so we're going to move on to resolutions. And we are going to skip down to community programs and parking services. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution, ID 10931, to accept the donation for the lacrosse wall and gazebo at Tatlock Field. The resolution, the original resolution, ID number 40279, as introduced by Councilman Miniger, and was unanimously passed at the May 3, 2022 council meeting to authorize use of public property at Tatlock Field as the site of a new business, of a new lacrosse wall and gazebo. This project provided at no cost to the city and includes a lacrosse wall and an enclosed field space where you can practice lacrosse shots. The other side of the wall, the gazebo side, is an open roof-covered space which can be used for viewing sporting events at Investors Field and as a general meeting space protected from the rain available for use by the entire Summit community. This project and, this project and its maintenance will be funded by Summit Lacrosse 50th Anniversary Planning Committee through contributions to the Summit Foundation. And I move to adopt this resolution to accept the donation of the lacrosse wall and gazebo.
And I second.
Okay, council comments?
I, through Council President?
Absolutely.
Just have a few questions for, I believe, Mark, but if you, okay. So three quick ones, and these are based directly on questions I got in email, which I want to make sure are answered before we do anything with this. So, can you tell me, there's, there's electric being run to the wall? Wanted to know what that was for. Can you give us an idea of how this impacts the sledding hill in that same area at all, if at all? And will they have to level that area to build this lacrosse wall and gazebo?
So through you, Council President? So question number one, the lights. There's no intention of having this thing lit for children to practice their skills. The gazebo portion, yes, there will be some lights that are underneath the roof, just some soft lighting for occasions if it gets dark. That's it. But not enough light to be able to play. Your second question was the sledding hill. So I was actually over there today to take a look at the sledding hill. And basically, this wall will not interfere with anything regarding sledding. When I was there, there was actually a saucer, and there were some jumps that the kids made. And that, that was from the ticket, if you're familiar with the area, that was from the ticket booth down to the field. That's the steepest part of that whole area. And that hill will continue to stay there, and the kids can sled every time it snows. As far as leveling the entire area where the wall is going to be built, there'll be some leveling, yes, but the, I mean, that area for the most part is somewhat level, but there will be some work there. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yes.
We also have, just in the audience, we have Chris Badgley and Leo Patis, who are part of the committee. So if you have any questions, you know, they can come up here as well and discuss the project as a whole.
Thank you, Director Ozarowski. And other council comments? We were going to see if we could pull it up on the website just to see if it's possible to see the actual area, but, but while we do that, any other council comments? Oh, okay, okay. Okay, yeah.
I just want to Google her.
Yeah. Google.com, yeah. Okay. I'm going to throw it out to the public. Would anybody like to come and speak? Public comments?
I just have a couple of questions.
I'm going to have Diego speak first.
I'm looking at the rules that this council enacted in January about public comments. And it says, quote, "All comments from any member of the public addressing council members shall be directed through the council president." I had no intention to interpolate anybody directly. I was just going to address somebody else. But the fact is that despite the way that these rules are written in plain English, very clear, I was told to not speak.
Mr. Hoick already made a public comment, did he not?
Yeah, we were saying you couldn't come up for a second public comment.
It says, "All comments from any member of the public." Implicit in that is that you can make one, two.
But you said you were responding to.
Yeah, I was making, I was going to make a public comment in response to something that councilwoman has said. But I would, but the way, the way it is written, it says all comments. It doesn't say all comments is limited to one. So the language is very clear. You should have accepted all comments.
I suggested that you respond, you give council member Hamlet the opportunity to respond to you instead of just doing it here because that would become an exchange. That's not a public comment. That's perhaps in response to something she may have said.
That was not, I did not have any intention to have an exchange with a councilwoman. And respectfully, there was no way you could have known what I was about to say.
You did say that you were wanting to comment on something she said.
I was going to make a public comment in response to something that she said. I did not indicate what I was going to say.
Thank you, Diego.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we, we have people here that have been waiting a long time to talk.
Would you like to talk about Tatlock gazebo? Yes, please come up. Diego, please do not talk from the cues.
11 Greenfield Avenue. The only question I have is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoick, I mean, we have a, we have a resident talking and you're, and you're speaking. I mean, can you just respectfully?
I know.
Go ahead, sir.
I was told to be authority by the government to shut up. This is a criminal violation.
Right now, the, the resident has the, the resident has the floor. You have the floor, sir.
The only question, well, one question.
Just speak into the microphone so they can hear you at home.
Okay. The, in order, if they put the wall in, in order to support that slab, are they going to have to drill down and put any supporting structure under that? Because down below that is probably still some of the cinder from the original track. The track actually extended up into that portion of the field.
I'll have Director Ozarowski, please come to the microphone.
Yeah, I can answer as much as I know. Chris, I don't know if you guys are in Leo, you can talk about it.
We did have Prisco come out and do some soil borings over there. So we've already tested the area and we're, you know.
Okay.
Does that help you?
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments? No public comments. Okay. All right, hearing none. Let's take a, do you want to go back to council comments?
I just have a couple of comments.
Go ahead. Councilman Hamlet, what am I Googling?
Director Schager, through you, Council President. Director Schager, we were talking about this earlier. Can you point it out in the DRO for us whether or not this has to go to the planning board and what the process would be? Just so we're clear, some of these questions are regarding.
Yes, through you, Council President. It's not in the DRO. It's part of the MLU municipal land use law. I can't quote it specifically now, but historically, projects of this nature would go to the planning board as a courtesy review. And the residents would be notified and be presented before the board.
Okay.
Is that what's going to happen?
Well, that's what I'm asking. This is a guidance from, what's the next steps here? We're approving this award, but in the last 99 times we've done this, how often does it go to the planning board? Not this specifically, but a capital improvement to one of our municipal.
A project, especially with facilities, and this one in April of 2022, it was conveyed, and I believe they're fully aware that it will go to the board. But typically, on your public spaces, Village Green, Memorial Field, they go to the planning board for review.
Okay, and then through you, Council President, I guess, I wasn't involved on council when this was originally. But was that something that we thought about back when we approved the award the first time? I don't know if anybody knows whether or not it was planning on going to the planning board. I don't, I didn't see any language in that. I don't know.
I don't know.
No, I'm just talking to the council that was on. Okay, so it sounds reasonable that if this had to go to the planning board, we're, if we were voting on this tonight, but if it has to go to the planning board, then it has to go to the planning board, correct? And who will determine that?
Right, well, which, which way is it? I mean, we need somebody to explain, right?
Right, I agree.
Whether it's planning board first and then we approve it finally?
No, it's definitely, we can approve the award, correct?
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Skip to Council President.
Go ahead.
I mean, this, this was actually approved in May of 2022. So we're just now, this resolution is just simply accepting the award that has been privately raised by the lacrosse community.
Right.
The contract, if I remember.
Oh, come to the microphone.
Leo Patis, P-A-Y-T-A-S, 164 Beechwood Road. So this is the, we're gifting this.
Yep.
We have our contractor, Prisco, who gets approved. And we have the funds within our budget to pay for this, so you guys don't have to pay anything. Is that cool? All right, good. So the plans, though, need to go to, to get the permits. So that may or may not trigger a planning board approval. So it's really once, once those plans get submitted and the permits get out there, whether or not planning board has to see it. That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, that's what I was looking for.
But we, we can't give them a solid estimate, yes, it's going to happen or no, it's not, right?
But we can't give them a solid estimate, yes, it's going to happen, or no, it's not, right?
It has to go through the permitting process, correct?
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, they look at permits ahead of time all the time, don't we, Aaron? And we know, right, whether it's going to go to the planning board, need to go to the planning board, or we don't, right? We have an email of April 2022 saying it would have to go to the board. Okay, there's your answer, right? So, okay, great.
Leo, could you point on the map, do you mind just kind of circling where the?
Is this a pointer?
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, no, no, that's a clicker. You know, go to one of the screens and just, and if anybody in the back room can put a camera on Leo, that would be great. Where would the wall be?
So, the wall is going to be right in this location.
You have to duck while you're doing it, so we can see it.
Right, I do this, sorry. In this location right here. So, it's going to be first back from the entrance into the field, the entrance field.
So, it'll be tucked back into the trees?
Back in this area, and the size of it is basically.
Sorry. Yeah, well, the T, at home, they can't hear you.
It really is going to be further, further, further back, so the grassy area that's around that track area in front of it will still be open in grass area. The wall will be back and tucked in that smaller area.
Okay, great.
Any questions?
Behind the wall will be fenced in, yeah, where the kids are throwing the ball back and forth, just so that they don't go astray.
So, Leo, my kid, Trevor used to play lacrosse, so when you walk in.
He still does?
No, he's in, he's at Indiana University now.
Okay.
I know. So, when you walk in to the right, you walk into the fenced-in area, will that wall in any way affect the kids playing in that grassy area? So, when we set up a temporary snack shack type of thing, you know, they set up a tent, and then there's kids playing everywhere, is that going to affect that entire activity?
No.
At all?
It won't, it won't.
Okay.
So, that activity will still be available.
Okay.
And in fact, with the pavilion, that food service could be actually utilized underneath a pavilion as well.
Okay.
So, there's that optionality as well.
Okay, okay, great, that's important, thank you.
Hi, Katie Isakovic, do you need the spelling of my last name?
Yes, full name and address.
I S A K O V I C H, 51 Butler Parkway, and I think my house will be the closest to the lacrosse wall. And I just, you know, you mentioned transparency, and I just wanted to point out that, you know, this has, this has gone pretty far, and we just found out about it at that meeting that was completely about something else, and, you know, we weren't, like, my, neither I nor the people who we bought our home from two years ago were informed that this was going to happen before essentially it's already happening.
So, I just want to clear, in April, I think it was April 19th, 2022, they, the gentleman came to council, and they gave a full presentation, and the council at the time said they were looking forward to moving forward, they wanted to accept a donation, so on May 3rd, 2022, we voted on the resolution to actually install the wall, and so tonight is just for, the resolution for tonight is to accept the funding.
Understood.
And so, for tonight, it sounds as though that if, when we vote tonight, it then gets triggered to go to the planning board? Director Schrager?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm right. So, the planning board will then, what's the process at the planning board, actually? The process at the planning board?
It's just a courtesy review.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay, so it was almost two years ago.
Right, and I asked about this, and that was around the time that we moved in, and nobody came to ask us personally about it, like, it was up to us to figure out that this was going to happen across the street, right when we moved in with a newborn. So, like, you know, we're talking about transparency, we're talking about setting up these meetings with, with the local community, this isn't, that meeting got set up regarding the Tatlock lights after it was kind of initiated by the concerned citizens, and I'm just, the point I want to make is past behavior is the best predictor of future behavior. So, it would have been nice to have been informed personally, rather than to try and figure it out on my own, since we were the residents, like, many residents will be impacted by this, but our residence is literally the closest one to it, and we weren't even, like, consulted, this is the first that I found out about it, was on an unrelated topic.
Okay. I just want to be clear, there are two separate issues that have been discussed tonight, there's the wall, the lacrosse wall, that has already been passed and voted on, other than tonight, we're going to deal with the money. The lights have not, that's a whole separate issue.
I totally understand.
Just want to make sure we're clear, all right?
Totally understand, it also speaks to density and things like that, so we're, we are already putting in a wall, and now we're also talking about lights, these things, they become connected as a result of that.
Got it, thank you.
Council president.
Yes, councilman.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, and I know that you requested that meeting, and that's the reason why I made it a point to make sure that we had that meeting, so that we could be open and transparent. That was the very first meeting that we talked about Tatlock lights, where this actually came up, and we, Mark Ozerowski, made it a point to bring, so that we could talk about the entire possible projects that were going on in Tatlock Field, brought this, the rendering of the lacrosse wall. So, you know, to talk about transparency, you requested a meeting, and you were the very first people that we met with. So, and again, I mentioned, this is the very first time of many, so I tried to be as extremely transparent as possible, and explain everything as much as I knew, being in this position for a month and a half. So, I will continue to be transparent and meet with as many residents as possible to continue this dialogue, because the only way that this is going to be worked out is by listening to the residents and continuing a dialogue, so that we can come to some sort of consensus, whether it's done or not, right? So, I'm, my door is completely open, you can call me, email me, I'm happy to talk to you further, go into more detail, and as I get through this, I'm learning a lot more about the detail of these projects. So, I will continue to meet with these, with the residents of Tatlock, Lewis, and Aubrey, and those that are in the surrounding area of Tatlock. So, I, I'm just, my frustration is, I don't want to be accused of not being transparent, when the only thing I'm trying to do is be transparent, and to meet with as many residents that are affected by this as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Hal Dillon, 269 Ashland Road, D-I-L-L-O-N. Just a, just a couple of comments on the wall, I think from a, just to even walk through what it is, it, the intent is a space for the boys and girls of Summit to literally throw a ball against the wall. Today, they do that all over Summit, they do that at the high school, which is an active driveway, essentially, which is arguably dangerous, they do it at the elementary schools, and as the president of the lacrosse club, I hear about all things lacrosse, and one of those things is where the kids are playing wall ball. And this is a great option, that's going to cost the town nothing, to go in and be very additive to Tatlock. I don't think, for the people that live there, it's going to be a huge density issue, I think you're going to have the same number of kids that are at Tatlock already, and they're just going to be thrown against that wall. In fact, it's probably going to be a little bit easier during the, during those big sporting events, when those kids are there, that there aren't balls flying all over the place. It's going to be very contained, and it's, it's, even from a, you know, we talked a lot about affordability tonight, kids that can just go hit the wall is a much better option than spending $100 an hour on a private trainer. This is what we're telling our kids, we end every practice with, "Go hit the wall." It's going to make you a better lacrosse player, and I know this meeting is not about lacrosse, we've talked about some very serious topics, so I'm not trying to make light of that, but I don't, I think this is going to be very additive to the community, and it's, I really sincerely don't believe it's going to cause additional density issues at Tatlock. I think it's actually going to be a way to contain what's already going on, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Okay. You already spoke.
But on a separate issue.
On a separate issue.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Still not Tatlock, not lights this time.
Sorry, sorry.
We're talking about the resolution right now, are you still talking about the resolution?
Yes, yes.
We already spoke, I mean, that's your call.
I'm sorry, did you already speak on the Tatlock wall resolution, or the Tatlock lights?
On the lights, she spoke on the lights.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I got to be consistent, sorry.
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway, and I think, I think one of the main concerns that we had about not being consulted was not even so much the density issue, but more the noise, that, I mean, we already hear the pickleball from the tennis courts, you can hear that very clearly in our backyards, so now hearing who knows how many lacrosse balls just slamming against the wall, you know, and if lights go in until 10 o'clock at night, like, that could potentially be a nuisance to the people that live on the street. And then, just a question about the lights going in, when that goes to the planning board, is that a question for them to address about lighting?
This is not Tatlock lights.
No, 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 the lighting on the gazebo. Just why it would be necessary to encourage kids to hang out there after dark.
Yeah, go ahead, councilwoman Hamlet, did you want to?
Sure, so, I'm sorry, so your question is regarding the lights for Tatlock going to the planning board?
For the gazebo.
Gazebo.
Yeah.
So, what I will tell you is, in the planning board, we will go over all of that information. I'm not sure, Erin Dornick, through you, council president, Dornick, courtesy review, do we, are we able to set conditions in that? I'm on the planning board, so I can, you know, you'll be coming to those meetings, I'm sure.
The board, through you, council president, the board is for the opportunity of not binding recommendations.
As a courtesy review?
Yes.
But what I will tell you is, there's, there's all sorts of things that we can work with the neighborhood as far as noise control, and we already have things currently in our ordinances for noise, we can establish light ordinances, there's a lot we can do to protect you and your neighborhood from a lot of these things, and we'll work together to make sure we get that right.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you. And just to be clear, Director Schrager, the planning board, we don't, it doesn't come back to us to re-vote on it? That's just, it's them saying they're good with it, and that's it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hello, Jim Davidson, 209 Kent Place Boulevard, I'm also the head lacrosse coach, boys' coach, at the high school, and entering my, I believe it's my 26th year. So, I understand everyone's concern, especially potentially about noise and where the wall is and what have you, but I will tell you, over my 26 years, the amount of kids that were throwing the ball up against the fieldhouse, and balls going into the parking lot, and those things, I think this will help contain that. I also do agree with what Hal Dillon was saying, that, you know, I don't think you're going to see any more traffic or those things, the amount of kids that are there, whether it's practice or before games, they're always taking time to go up and throw up against the fieldhouse and what have you, and hopefully, we can eliminate those things. So, I think it's a good thing, I understand your concerns, and I think as a coach, too, we always try to make sure that we can do a better job of containing things, and doing a better job of having our kids, you know, get better, and then also do it the right way. So, anyway, I also want to thank Leo and Chris Badgley for all their efforts on this thing, it's been a long, long process, and I really appreciate what they're doing, and, you know, that's it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Gardner, I live at 199 Kent Place Boulevard, and I was asked just to stop by and offer some thoughts on the lacrosse wall. I haven't been actively involved in the project, but I'd just add a little historical perspective to it. As Mr. Bassman mentioned earlier tonight, the effort to turf Tatlock and the other fields in Summit was, was a, an interesting process. There was a lot of spirited debate, some would call it, and a lot of the concerns were voiced by the Butler Parkway residents and others in the area, and their concerns were fair, and they were legitimate. But I think that in the end, after almost three years, we came to a good resolution, and I think, is now 23 years later, we have had the opportunity perhaps to see, and you've heard some comments tonight about the benefits of turfing the field, and frankly, even the need for more fields, and I want to address that, and I want to address the lights, but I will say that the proposal to install the wall will address a lot of safety concerns, kids throwing the ball in parking lots and such, and I also think it'll be helpful for the community in terms of getting kids out individually, not necessarily in an organized, organized team sport, but, you know, wall ball is, is an individual effort, and having children from around the city spend some time together, and bond perhaps with kids from other school, make those friendships that we want them to make will be a positive step, and so, this is the type of venue, I think, that will ultimately benefit Summit and all the values that you hope to bring to the city, so, thank you for your efforts, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further comments? Director Ozerowski, you don't want to do any final comments, you're good, okay. Okay, well, hearing no other comments on council, councilman Miniger?
Can I just do three quick things?
Yeah, of course.
They're all thank you, so they're really quick. Number one is, thank you to the folks who live in the neighborhood for writing in, because I had no idea until this afternoon, that kids were sledding in that area, so that's, I didn't know that. Number two is, thank you to Mark for assuring us that that can certainly continue after approval. And then number three would be, Leo and Chris, thank you for your incredible generosity, and for everybody else who donated to the project, you know, this is incredible, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, just a quick round of thanks and appreciation, and again, we'll, we'll get this right for the residents, and I think we can all do this together, so, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Miniger, do you want to say anything? You introduced the resolution many years ago.
No, I agree with it, it's definitely a safety thing, it's also, I've seen, I've seen some lacrosse players playing up against the high school wall, which I don't think was allowed, so, I'm glad that this is going to be in place, and I look forward to seeing it.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it as well.
All right.
It looks.
Excellent, all right, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, also. All right, so, hearing no other public comments, I'd like to take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. Councilwoman Smallwood, your resolution, your second resolution.
Thank you, council president, this is.
Thanks, everybody.
Resolution ID 11042, to authorize submission of a grant application to the NJDCA Local Recreation Improvement Grant Program, not to exceed $100,000, to carry out a project to make improvements to Tatlock Playground. Apparently, this is the night of Tatlock, so I enthusiastically move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Wonderful, council comments?
I have one thing for this, which was, my question was, why, and it was answered over the weekend, I'm just telling people. My question was, why weren't we applying for MAYBE? And the answer was, we already did apply for MAYBE, so, you know, in my, in my mind, it's like, finish a playground project, right, funding first, before we start others, but we've tapped out, we've maxed our potential for MAYBE through this grant program, so this is being applied to Tatlock, which would be the next playground that is on our list of priorities, so, that was my question that was answered. Thank you for that, David, Mark.
Excellent, okay, other council members? Okay, public comment? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay, Councilman Smallwood, resolution number three.
Thank you, council president, this resolution ID number 11048, whereas the Department of Community Programs is applying for a grant through the New Jersey Department of, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Jake's Law Program for the MAYBE Playground Improvement Project. Part of the application requires the mayor and chair of the planning board to certify that the Recreation Open Space Inventory List is up to date. The last inventory was made in 2007, and I adopt to, I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Excellent, council comments?
I just have one. One comment, sorry, Kevin, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this today, we were going back and forth on some, I think I talked to you about it briefly, but for the, for the Recreation Open Space Inventory List, this is going to need to be signed, as you're probably well aware, by the planning board after this, so, I spoke with our city planner tonight, because our next planning board is next week, and I believe the grant is due shortly thereafter, so, this is definitely something that the planning board is going to have to opine on, and then potentially, just make sure it's 100% right for the inventory list. 100% right for the, the inventory list.
And, I believe, David maybe can probably speak to this more. I believe we've already done the inventory?
So, we have explored, obviously, what is our current city properties, and there's a whole outline of what properties to include and what properties not to include in the, the Rossi, Recreation Open Space Inventory. And basically, we went through all the city properties that are owned by the city, and this is what we, this is, we find it true to be the same properties that were done in 2007. Since then, the city has not acquired or sold any properties, so it's remained consistent. Just for clarification, when it does say Martinsburg Park, because I know that that was also a question that was brought up, that includes the entirety of Tatlock Field and all of those portions that are owned by the city, doesn't include the portion that's owned by the school, because we don't own it. And, a question that I had, when it went to the state, went back and forth with Bruce from the DEP, was, do we include the Constantine Play Some parcel? No, because it's not, its primary use is not for recreation or conservation. It's on, obviously, that station there. And, yeah, I think that was it.
Thank you.
And the only other last thing I would say is, that's a good example for the Constantine, Constantine pump station, although we don't have to include it for this specific grant and the Rossi inventory. It's something that the planning board certainly needs to opine on for that reason.
Excellent. Okay.
I hope the planning board wouldn't have the opinion that a pump station constitutes recreation or open space, but I think it's fair for them to talk about it.
Might be recreation for some.
Well, no, there's actually, there's, there's like, a lot of different, so there can be, can be like wetlands, it's, it's, this isn't all about recreation, so there can be, I think it's like flood. Erin, you probably know more about it, but there's a lot of different categories that this may open up something for the planning board that we had initially, we just hadn't looked at it since 2007, apparently, so.
Yeah. And you told me I had to be funny, so that's three in a row now that we've talked about Tatlock, so, so we got to keep that going.
Got to keep going. All right. Thank you, Man. Thank you, Councilwoman Arctian. All right. Are there any other comments from council and from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we are going to go back up to Safety and Health, which was our, initially, our first resolution. Councilman Boyer.
This is ID number 11052, authorizing Fire Department Promotions, one for Battalion Chief, Brian Hornoid, and Fire Lieutenant, Brian Tavis. Both, the mayor and I sat in an interview with both of them. They are amazing leaders in their own rights, and I think the Fire Department will, will be benefited greatly with them, with both of them at the helm. And, secondly, to mention, the other individuals that we interviewed, too, were, were amazing. I think the Fire Department has a, just a litany of good talent, and I, I'm truly happy, truly happy about what they're, what Chief Evers has in his arsenal, also. So I move this, I'd like to motion to move this resolution to a vote.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments?
Council president, just a very quick congratulations to both of them, but especially Lieutenant, soon-to-be, Brian Tavis. We worked together at the Y when we were younger, and whenever there was an emergency...
Was that five years ago?
Yeah.
You set me up for that one.
Yeah. Whenever there was an emergency, I really hoped he got there first, and, and that, so just to say, congratulations. It's excellent.
Thank you, Councilman. Absolutely. Congratulations to both of them. Okay. Public comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Plousky, Law and Labor.
This is Resolution ID number 11030, to authorize extended sick leave with pay for one of our public employees. Per our closed session discussion, we are approving a request for extended sick leave following surgery of a pub, a Division of Public Works employee. I move that we pass this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Any council comments? All right, public comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, capital projects and community service, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, council president. This is Resolution number 11002, which will reject bids and abandon project for the 2024-2025 snow and ice removal for parking lots and decks. The snow and ice removal services for Summit's parking lots and decks were put out to bid twice. The first time, there were no respondents on 11/9/23. The second time, the bid was too high. As the estimate for the potential total contract amount, based on the unit pricing in the bid, would have exceeded the budgeted amount, we are rejecting, we're rejecting this bid for the record, NJSA 40A:11-132B, substantially exceeding the appropriation. As a result, it has been the recommendation of the Department of Community Services Director to abandon the project at this time. I would like to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Great. Council comments? Public comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Council president, can I bundle the next four, as they're very similar in nature, almost identical, just with different firms?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. This is Resolution 10910, 10908, 11043, 11044. Whereas the City of Summit has a need to acquire professional engineering services to assist on capital projects as needed, as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. The anticipated terms of these contracts is from January 1st through December 31st, 2024. Boswell Engineering, not to exceed $100,000. Stonefield Engineering, not to exceed $65,000. Remington Engineering, not to exceed $250,000. And ONS Engineering, not to exceed $100,000. These have all been submitted as a proposal in response to a public request for qualifications for these services, with said costs estimated by the DCS Director not to exceed what I had mentioned earlier. Specific project invoice, project-specific invoices will be provided by the vendor upon assignment of individual projects to be determined during the term of the 2024 contract, and funds will be certified against the appropriate capital ordinance. I'd like to move this resolution. These are resolutions.
I second.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet, number six.
This is Resolution number 10985. This resolution declares a vacancy for the Department of Community Services pursuant to Personnel Policy, number 5.1, Employment Procedure, that a vacancy, vacancy is hereby declared in the Code Enforcement Division of the Department of Community Services for the position of a zoning officer. I would like to move, I'd like to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Excellent. Council comments?
Just very quickly, I don't think there's any single person who's had more to do with development in Summit than Krista. So, she's been involved in every application, every permit, and this is a huge, huge, huge role, so we need to start recruiting immediately. So, if you have friends, family, loved ones that are zoning officers, we're, we're going to be hired, so, yeah. And congratulations, Krista.
Yeah, and I agree. And congratulations to Krista. She's certainly been an instrumental leader in this town, and, and we're obviously going to miss her, and we're going to try to spend as much time with her and gather all her knowledge for the next couple of months.
Good luck. All right. Public comments?
Hold on.
Oh, no, wait. No, no, not, is there any other comment, council comments? Public comments? Okay. Councilman Miniger, do you want to say anything about Krista? Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are moving on to the consent agenda at this time. Does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda before we start?
So, I need to recuse myself from item number two under Finance. Acting City Solicitor, what's the best way for me to do that?
You can avoid on everything else, but I've seen it from number two.
Okay.
Okay. Does...
So I don't need to leave the room or anything?
Well, if we're going to discuss it, then I insist you either, there's no discussion going to leave the room.
Okay.
Okay. We'll pull it out. Does anyone want to discuss item number two under Finance? Before we, okay. What's that? So we're...
You can go outside.
I'm just, I just want to be very, very clear. If he needs to recuse himself, he should leave the room, correct?
We're pulling, we're pulling out just this one?
Just the one.
Okay. If we're pulling out, then you can leave the room.
Okay.
I thought we were voting on the whole thing, and you're just going to recuse yourself from number two.
Yeah, look, procedurally, whatever you think.
I would do that. I would leave the room. It's consistent.
We'll pull it out, and you can leave the room.
Just to be clear, that's 10975.
10975. And we will vote on that first, and then have him come into the room, and then vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Okay. Is there, so I'm going to do that, because I don't know if anybody's pulling out anything else, so I want him to be back in the room for that. Okay, so, public comment on number two? On the resolution number, I'm sorry, resolution number?
10975.
10975? Okay. Hearing none? Is there something you're going to say? Okay.
Sorry.
You always look like you're ready to say something. All right. All those in favor?
Anybody from the comments, from the public?
Oh, yeah, they said no. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Who, who motioned?
Sorry. All right. What do I do? Okay, sorry.
Call for motion.
Call for, okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any council comments? Any public comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Could somebody let Bob in? It's these pulling out of the consent agenda. I'm still working on the technique.
Council president, what do we, what do we have next?
So we're going to, if there, once, Councilman...
We're going to consider the rest of the consent agenda.
We're going to consider the rest of the consent agenda.
Maybe just like a two-minute...
Yeah, I'm going to...
Oh, wait. Okay. All right, that's fine. We're going to take a pause, restroom break. As, as quickly as possible. We're almost done.
I'm so close.
Oh, here he comes. Just make sure nobody gets stuck out there talking.
Where are we? Consent agenda?
By the way, did anyone know it's Rosemary Clerk Lecatise's 33rd anniversary? On intermission, we should say thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Last time, it was your husband's birthday.
It was Frank's birthday. Two meetings ago.
We got you flowers.
Yeah, oh, thank you. David, we forgot to tell, tell everybody that the senior citizen, you know what, while we're waiting, you might as well, can I have him just say where the flowers came from?
Of course. You should come talk about where the flowers came from.
So today, as Mayor Fagan mentioned during her opening comments, we held our first annual Black History Month, or first inaugural, was educated on that first inaugural Black History Month event, and we had a showcase of some great black talents within our community, a bunch of black-owned businesses and talents from town, and our seniors made floral decorations, along with the kids, too, but these are from two of our seniors, so...
That's really nice.
Thank you for sharing them with us. David, can you go check on Councilman Boyer, please?
Guys, no more bathroom breaks for the rest of the... Everybody would like to go home.
No more bathroom breaks.
I know. Amendment to the council rules? What do you think, Bob?
No breaks. No breaks.
Councilman Boyer, if you can hear us?
I mean, we have a quorum.
Okay. May I?
Yes. If you have a quorum.
Okay.
I need to be that guy.
No.
We could lose two or three more.
On up, on up. Come on, Boyer.
Okay. Pep in the step, pep in the step, pep in the step. Excellent. Okay. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any council comments? Public comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on.
Motion to adjourn?
No, no, not yet. We have... They're going to regret putting me as president. We'll be here until midnight if it kills me. I'm only kidding. I'm kidding.
You have to adjourn. You have to vote on it, right?
No.
Not if there's no second.
There was no second.
There's no second.
No second on what?
Council member comments? We're moving on to new business and council member comments.
Through you, council president.
Absolutely, Councilman Miniger.
So, last meeting, I voted against the resolution because it was rushed, the public received zero notice of it. It wasn't on the agenda, wasn't on the website, and was not mentioned to residents about, until about midnight. I pointed this out, I made some suggestions. Council President Allen and Councilmember Plousky agreed with me, and there may be more as well, that we needed to notify the public of these situations. I expect we will have a resolution on the next agenda with some changes to the rules that will help fix this. After I made this observation and suggested changes, I got some angry responses from people, It wasn't on the agenda, wasn't on the website, and was not mentioned to residents about, until about midnight. I pointed this out. I made some suggestions. Council President Allen and Councilmember Plasky agreed with me. And there may be more as well, that we needed to notify the public of these situations. I expect we will have a resolution on the next agenda with some changes to the rules that will help fix this. After I made this observation and suggested changes, I got some angry responses from people, which was surprising. I wanted to make sure the community was aware of what we were doing when we were voting on something. And that was met with messages and emails calling for my, calling me dishonest. I was accused of grandstanding. My text messages were Oprah'd. I was accused of doing zilch. Zilch. And I was accused of dividing the community. It's okay to embrace the ideas that you hear that are good, even if it comes from somebody who you may not have voted for. I represent all of Ward One. So again, these changes will ensure the community is fully aware of what we are voting on. We have agreement up here on the council, many of us, and that is a very good thing. So thank you.
Council President? I'm sorry, did I, did I miss something? The authorized change order, the appointment of the crossing guard, did we?
They were all under cassette, voted all through.
Okay, so we just went through them. Good. Okay, thank you. Made my job easier.
I'd just like to make a comment, and Councilman Miniger, I'm sorry that, I don't know what all these comments were from text messages and emails. But, you know, I would like to make the point that the city clerk, I would request that perhaps the city clerk through the city administrator, we put out some sort of memo, because I just wanted to make it very clear that our city clerk did nothing wrong that evening. In fact, in past, we had never put the paperwork out in the front of the building. Her only requirement was to notify the council and the city administrators through email correspondence, from what I understand. So I just really wanted to, and Andy, I think your questions were good. How do we notify the public? Just, I think it's, you know, we're only getting better from here. And also, our city communications officer had a death in her family and a gravely ill parent. So I just wanted to make sure for the staff that this was certainly not representative of what we thought. We're just all working through something that's never been done before. And to Councilman Miniger's point, I think it'll be positive change going forward, so thank you.
Other council comments?
Yeah, I mean, just, just to follow up on Andy's comments. So the public knows, this resolution was finalized the day of the meeting. And honestly, nobody thought of it until it was too late to put something out. So what we've done is we've, we've looked back at the rules, and we've put a rule in place that I think is going to primarily keep the council members cognizant of these types of situations. And any one of us could have put something out if and when we had thought of it. And it's a shame that we didn't, but at the end of the day, I think, I think we got the resolution right. And I don't think it could have waited until the next council meeting, so. But the, we're always looking to improve, and if we need to make rule changes along the way to do that, we'll do it.
Council President Allen.
And just for anybody listening, that, what was passed in Trenton just a week or so ago is very concerning for the City of Summit, this municipality specifically. And Mr. Plasky and I were on the phone most of the weekend, talking about how we are going to advocate and push the League of Municipalities to have a stronger stance, which we really do believe needed to happen. Obviously, it got passed in the Assembly, but we're hoping that the Senate puts some precautions in place as this would seriously impact Summit. So, thank you.
Council President, just very quickly.
Yeah.
So I agree that the legislation in Trenton directly impacts Summit. I think there is a number, there are a number of other issues that are being discussed in Trenton, that are being discussed in Washington, that directly impact residents of Summit. So I will commit as the administrative policy chair to flag those items, hopefully with more notice. And we can address those things that we think will be beneficial to our constituents. Thank you.
Other council comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a couple of things. So I think tonight, you know, since, since being on the dais and running for council, my, my whole point has been to unify people. And I know race is a very tough subject. You know, it has many different tentacles. It's not just one thing, you know, racism and whatever. It's a very, I mean, it's a very deep topic. And it is my fundamental belief that we cannot progress if we are all not in agreement of the right way. You know, it can't be one particular group saying, you know, one thing, and using racism or bigotry or something like that to force people to go a certain way. We are all Americans. We are all residents of Summit. We all have the capacity just to do the right thing. I think that we all want affordable housing. But does it have to be always, you know, couched in a way that, oh, what about, you know, redlining and this and that? No, you know what? We all actually want it. We all want to see, you know, affordable housing being built in Summit. How do we get there? How many, you know, yeah, that's, that's debatable. But it necessarily doesn't have to be a racial thing, right? Safety in our town, right? We all want to be safe. Nobody wants to be burglarized. Nobody wants their car stolen, right? And so we try to do the right thing to pass a ordinance to protect residents. Had nothing to do with whether you're white, black, Hispanic. Everybody wants protection. Black people want protection too. But I think we can move together as a collective when we start thinking how to move forward together. And, you know, I had Tony Ellis come up here tonight, and he gave a very emotional speech. And that turned into, as Mrs. Gagnon said, something political. And actually, I was sitting up here, and I was, I was sad for him as well. I mean, I saw his face, and he was happy. He had his aunt here. He was joyous. It was his moment, and it turned into something else. And the reason why I had him up here is for unity, you know? For him to, to say like, yeah, you know what, I had a, I had a, I had a great experience in this all-white town, actually. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't bad. You know, it actually helped me become a better person, these experiences. And, and that has been, you know, my goal throughout this whole thing. And I'm going to continue to, to raise the flag on unity and, and not division. So I'm sorry, I gave a long contrarian speech, but I just felt compelled to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Not contrarian. Councilman Smallwood?
Motion to adjourn.
No, no. I haven't said what I want to say. Are there any other council comments before I say the last statement? I just wanted to address, Councilman Miniger, your sentiment around what was said about you bringing up the resolution, about A4, the resolution for A4. So a couple of things. One, I acknowledged on the dais in that moment that you were right. Like, maybe I should have done X, Y, and Z. I have no problem learning on this dais. I mean, this is sort of a learn-on-the-job type of thing. And good government actually is adaptable, and it listens. And sometimes, you just have to make different decisions. So I could have taken ownership of that, and I appreciate that. And I recognized it in the moment. So, you know, we've had, we've known each other now for a couple of years. I've been by myself. Then I had Delia. I know how it feels to not always be in the majority. And so to sit down with you at breakfast, engage with you, I really want you to feel, and I've said this to both you and Councilman Vartan, is that, you know, for, especially Councilman Vartan, who was in his last year, that I, we're all here to make a difference. I don't want you to feel as though this year is just an uphill battle, and it's a waste of your time. You're volunteering your time just like everyone else, and I value that. So I don't, I didn't say anything, I don't know what those comments were. I will tell you, we've all been Oprah'd, and it is not a fun feeling. It's, I think it feels targeted often for all of us. It happens as elected officials. So I'm sorry that you feel that someone said something, I don't know if it was on the dais or if it was from the public.
For the record, it was not on the dais.
Okay, that's, that's important to me, because I really want to build a synergy with this group. And I know in a sense that it's not team, because we're elected officials. But I want to get there as close as we can, because we are here to serve the public first, foremost, and last. So imperfectly as it might be, I want you to know that I appreciate all of us, all of us.
All of you.
Okay? All right. Any final comments? All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Wonderful. Okay, that's it.
No.
So moved.
Oh, so moved. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
And second.
I'm going to take a second.
Yeah, sorry. I thought you talked at the same time. That's why, I thought so moved and second was at the same time. I apologize.
That's okay. They said it together. Yeah, no, no.
We got to vote.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.